Thanks for coming to the regular city council meeting July 10, 2017. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Lisa's not here. Thank you again, Judy. Bob Martin will not be with us tonight. We advised him earlier. He was at the office today but couldn't make it this evening. Everyone else is here. For rule of the minutes, June 25th, 2017. Anyone have anything?
I move the minutes.
I've got one question.
Harvey?
I noticed that there's not a motion to approve the minutes and I'd like to record to show that I voted no because of the comments that I had made just previously.
Yeah, I'll move the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove all the bills?
I had several questions, John. May I begin? Okay, starting on page one of the bills, there's a charge for CIV planning for a consulting firm for $5,345. I just wanted to check, is that our average cost? Is that higher than normal per month?
That is higher than normal, but that is always based on, other than the $600 retainer, it's based on fees that are escrowed.
Okay.
So for site planning and planning commission approvals and things like that.
Because at this point, you know, I've been satisfied with how we've been receiving our bills from the planning consultant, but I just want to keep an eye on in case they keep on staying a little higher than normal, then maybe we may need the detailed invoices, similar to the city attorney invoices, but I'm not at that point now. I just wanted to put that out there. Next, there was a charge for $2,712 from Peter's True Value Hardware. There's one line that says tire cleaner, switch fuel, saw blade for $157. This is on the same page. Then underneath it, it says May 2017 statement. Can we get a breakdown of what the $2,712 is for? Or does that include the line above?
It does not include the line above and yes, I can get you a breakdown.
Okay, because I'm not sure what we're paying for based off of the line. It's just a generic line. Next, wanted to ask about the concerts in the park. This is page two. There's a charge at the top for $700. And then, I believe it's page, yeah, the third page, it's, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, the fourth page, it's for concert in the park on 630 for $580. I was under the impression that we paid a flat fee per event.
No, each band has its own price.
Okay, because if this was, because if we're paying $700 a week, how many concerts are we doing? I'm just wondering if this should have actually been bid out, just because it's above the $5,000 threshold, just procedurally, if that's the case.
If we bid it out, we would be bidding it out to a concert promoter. What we do now is we individually contract with different bands at different rates to make sure that we provide a variety of genres of music for the Concert in the Park series.
Yeah, I'm satisfied. I'm just, I guess my point is, it would be nice to have maybe a set fee that we're paying so there's not, take the negotiation out of it going forward, but you know, the series is underway. I'm very happy with the service. I just wanted to get clarification on that, so thank you.
Can I ask a question related to that? Is there a budget allocated towards the amount of money for the entire concert season?
Yes.
So then it's just deviated out towards the bands in a way that uses that amount of money?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. It struck me that there was two different charges for two different bands. Next, I was wondering about the, on page three, there was a charge for $550 for fence repaired, storm damage from city. I was just curious what happened there, why we had to, where the city had that damage and why, what happened exactly that we had to repair?
I'm not familiar with that charge and Bob Martin's not here to respond. It may, from the looks of it, storm damage from city. It may be a city vehicle hit a fence when it was picking up bleed or debris from the storm. It could be a lot of different things.
My question, my next question was going to be, I just wanted to make sure that the resident was satisfied with, if they were handled appropriately, but I'm sure Bob could attest to that, or maybe I can ask him next time. Next, on the same page, there's a charge for $271 for concrete for sidewalk repair. I'm curious if, Bob's not here again, but which sidewalk that was and if that fell under the sidewalk reimbursement program, because since fiscal year is now started, I wanted to know if that's still, well, this is still from 615, so it would be included. So I just wanted some clarification on that.
And again, without Bob being here, I can't answer that.
Okay. Next, maybe Lynn, you know this one, new hire, physical, Marino. I was curious which department fire that, fire?
Fire.
Okay, excellent. I know we, that's great to get some more department firefighters in there, so thank you. And I had another comment, and that's, actually two more comments and then I'll wrap up. We did have a charge from our attorney, city attorney, which was on page two, for $2,864 for the general labor matters. I just want to say that, you know, the contract that we're going to be voting on, and I'll actually touch upon this with the agenda, I do not think it's actually favorable to the city residents and taxpayers. So in my opinion, I don't think this was a good deal for the city. Just wanted to make that statement. And then, I'll touch upon that more in the approval of the agenda, because I have comments. But then, my next question was actually for Bob, and I'm, I wish he was here, because it's regarding the fountain, the city fountain from Aqua Masters, and I'll touch upon this at the next council meeting, but basically, I wanted to get some clarification, because Bob informed me that when I asked about if this was bid out, and we actually, as a council, waived the competitive bid process, we only had one bid. I asked if this was bid out and Bob informed me that no other places, no other companies supply these types of parts and services. I did a quick search and I found seven different companies in Michigan and 11 different locations in Ohio and five in Indiana, and I was told that Indiana, they contacted companies from Indiana and nobody responded, and they contacted two or three companies in Michigan and nobody responded. Now, right here, as I said, I have seven companies in Michigan that supply the same parts, same prices as distributors, and I just wanted to touch upon the purchasing process, because I do think we could have got a better deal if we would have extended, done a little more homework talking to these seven distributors, but Bob's not here to answer that. So for that reason and the reasons I mentioned, there's a couple that stick out. I will not be approving these bills tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. This is regarding the fuller appraisal. Is the city going to incur that cost or is that something that's going to be passed off to the applicant?
The city will be incurring that cost.
Okay, I'll be talking about that a little bit later. And then, community promotions, Township of Canton repairs on shared movie screen, $39.75. What, does that go to Canton or?
What happened, the city of South Lyon, along with several other communities, including Canton, Novi, Milford, all share a portable movie screen that we use for movies in the park. When one of the communities finds problems, damage, things like that, and they need to be repaired, when they go to set it up, they get it fixed and then they split the cost of those repairs amongst all the communities that own the movie screen, trailer, and equipment.
Okay, okay. Thank you. My next one is more of a comment and it goes to, this is the payroll report, and I'm looking at DPW on overtime of $49.50, and I'm looking at waste and water treatment of $86.50, and the police department had $178.50. Now, I assume that this is coming under the last budget of the year, so that would be ending the end of June. The problem is, is when I looked at these overtime numbers, is I looked at the budget for 2017, 2018, and if you stay with some of these numbers, particularly with water and wastewater, they're going to be over their overtime for that budget cycle. So I just sort of want to say that, that police did not, the police department in item 702, I believe, does not break down in the narrative the number of hours, overtime hours, that are being spent with respect to police. Wastewater does, and that is how I was able to project and say, well, if they stay on this track, they're going to have a problem. So I'm just trying to let the department heads know that I'm watching the payroll, watching the overtime, and to me, it looks like there may be a problem down the road. People may have underestimated the wage portion in the fiscal 1718 budget, because these numbers are pretty high. Wastewater was high and police was high, so I'm just letting you know of that.
Can I ask a question about that overtime, since you mentioned it? I don't mean to interject, but.
No.
Okay. Lynn, I was going to, I mean, it is on the police side, and I know that Chief Collins, we talked about the overtime and you said that a lot of it has to do with contract-related matters and having men out, so I'm not so much looking at the police, because it seems like there's a logical explanation, but I did look for, was curious about, and I was going to ask Bob, but since he's not here, that's okay, maybe Lynn. So for the wastewater and the DPW, is there some sort of a mechanism for approval of the overtime or? I mean, I understand if there's a water main break, yeah, you're on call, and I was actually reviewing the contract that we're going to be reviewing tonight, and they do get paid for on-call service and all that, but anything basically over eight hours is overtime. It's not based off on a 40-hour work week. I mean, most people, they're able to work, they have to work 40 hours before they get through overtime, but in South Lyon, you can work eight hours. So is there some sort of an approval process in place?
Yes. Bob has to approve anyone staying past 3:30, which is the end of their shift, but keep in mind, the water and wastewater department, as well as DPW, do incur overtime with call-in and on-call costs. The water and wastewater department is required to have someone check the wells, the lift stations, and do lab work every day of the week, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So we do have to pay overtime to one or two people for those tests and hours every week.
Okay. Yeah, no, and that's all, I mean, the test, we're going to have consistent tests each week or each month that we know about. So I mean, that should be able, very easy to plan that unless there's something out of the ordinary that you're not foreseeing, that you know exactly what tests you have to do. There's a schedule you have to follow, there's maintenance you have to follow, and that should be pretty, pretty self-explanatory. I mean, but what does concern me is that I'm looking at this and there's some, some hours that have, you know, 18 hours, 10 hours, not so bad, but you know, then there's others with 16 hours, 24 hours, and some of these are the highest-paid employees. So you know, I'm not here to nitpick about the hours, but 24 hours, you know, when we're in a budget crisis like we are, as we had the highest tax increase in nearly two decades, it is scrutiny, and especially since this overtime's not budgeted for.
But keep in mind that this pay period, we had a holiday and we can't shut down our water and wastewater services, and that holiday time is additional overtime for those employees.
Of course, but you know, when you're upwards of 20 hours, I'm just saying, maybe we need to take a look at how much overtime we're using and the approval process and just make sure that, that we're not going over what's budgeted for, because otherwise, we're going to be in the same mess we are this year with having to raise taxes. Again, we don't want to have that. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you see, the thing that triggered it for me, Lynn, was wastewater at $86.50. Their overtime was at that amount, and of course, I looked at the union contract, you know, that we're going to be working on tonight, and this is, this is expensive overtime here. And when you look at the narrative for DPW, I mean wastewater, and that also, I think, is line 702, you'll see that the narrative states what the estimated overtime is going to be for 1718. If you take $86.50 and multiply that by 12, you're way over. So I don't know if this is an nominally, if this is an outlier, what is going on here, but if these are the kind of numbers that we're going to be seeing, that are going to be trending for the next six months, then we're already going to have some problems with the budget, because we're not even into winter yet. So I'm just letting people know, I'm watching this overtime a little bit, so. But I understand it's a necessity. Your explanation was very helpful, Lynn. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will this be the time to, if we had questions on the attorney invoices? I would think so, because they're on the bills that we are approving tonight.
That is up to the council.
Haven't those bills already been paid?
Well, that was the problem, was when we paid them last month, we didn't have the invoices in front of us to review them. And these, if they've already been paid, I mean, that's, that's actually one of the systematic problems, is that we're paying invoices without even knowing what we're paying, kind of like passing things without knowing what we're passing, such as the budget.
City manager looks at them.
Well, yeah, but we're the ones that have to approve the invoices. She looks at them, she gives it to us for approval. I can't approve something that.
Go ahead, go ahead. I mean, it's your show.
Oh, no, I don't see it as a show.
It's due diligence.
It's a show.
It's due diligence, Mike.
Okay. We have a lot of people here waiting for a ceremony.
It's part of the due diligence.
I may take a few minutes if we want to do the ceremony and adjust the agenda. I can always come back to the invoices. I have no issue with that, if that's what you prefer. Mr. Primmer?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, we'll do that. While we're doing.
No, 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 no. The kids aren't, they're not here. Are they here yet? They are here? All right.
They're out in the hallway.
So perhaps after approval of agenda and after the ceremony, we can, we'll talk about the agenda, then we'll move the bills. That's my proposal, at least. There's over $9,000 to approve here, so I just ask some questions, but I don't want to hold up the crowd.
All right, that's a first. Do we need to have someone make a motion to move it to some other portion of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be amended to move the approval of bills, final approval of bills, approval of the agenda, public comment to the end of the swearing-in of new officers and the presentation of the unit citation.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Chief, it's your show.
Hi, Chief.
It's your show.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate that. If I get our new firefighters up, please. All right, so some good stuff to start off tonight. We've had four firefighters complete their firefighter one and two training and are now state certified. Our first firefighter, Brittany, has also recently received her EMT cert and is a national register EMT as well. So I'd like to take time to allow some family members to go ahead and swear them in, and I'll ask the deputy city clerk to start that process and open the badge. So first firefighter is Brittany Tooman.
I'm Sally Sue. But I support the Constitution of the United States. And I will faithfully discharge the reason of fire.
You may pin the badge. All right, congrats, Brittany. Next up will be Kirsten McGaham, and Kirsten has also recently, again, she's completed all of the state firefighter training, completed all of our training, is now a firefighter for us. Also, the McGaham family has genetic genes for speed. They recently crushed the duck run over in Brighton. I think every family member was in the top place, so if you need to stack your team with a marathon group, use them. So if you could swear them in, please.
I'm Kirsten McGaham. But I support the Constitution. But I support the Constitution. And I will faithfully discharge the reason of fire. For the South Lyon murder, according to the.
Please pin the badge. All right, congrats Kirsten. All right, up next will be Zach Dobrik. Zach and our next firefighter, Austin, were both graduates of the Howell High School program. This is the second year we've sent firefighters there. It's a very successful program. Basically, their senior year, they work on their fire training, so when we get them, they're fully trained and they completed all of our in-house training as well. So if you could, please swear in Zach.
I'm Sally Sue.
All right, please pin the badge. All right, congrats, Zach. Okay, up next, Austin Villett. Austin also graduated from South Lyon High School. He was part of the Howell High School Academy as well, and we're happy to have him as a full firefighter for us as well. If you could swear in Austin, please.
Can I say your name?
I'm Austin Villett.
But I support the Constitution.
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 All right, please pin the badge.
All right, congrats, Austin. All right, so you're going to see some familiar faces. Again, I appreciate the time tonight. On June 16, 2017, at 12:14 a.m., South Lyon fire was alerted to a structured fire at Waters Edge Apartments on Lakewood Drive. Units arrived to find a first-floor apartment involved in fire. The rear bedroom window had failed, so it was a first-floor apartment and fire was traveling up the vinyl siding and it had also taken control of the attic. The Engine One crew pulled the pre-connect line and attacked the first-floor fire, and while this was occurring, the Engine Two crew pulled an additional 550 feet of hose around the rear of the house and started battling the exterior wall and attic fire. One first-floor apartment suffered significant damages, along with three apartments on the second floor. SLFD crews performed outstanding work, and this fire easily could have resulted in a total building loss. Oftentimes with these apartment buildings, once it takes control of the attic, it's very common for us to lose the whole thing, and basically, both crews just did phenomenal work. Everything was firing on all cylinders that night, and a lot of people saved their belongings. Obviously, with it being at midnight, a lot of people were still asleep when the fire happened. This easily could have been a tragedy and could have been much, much worse, but because of these great men and women that we have on our department, they did an outstanding job, and I'd like to present them with the unit citation tonight, so thank you. If I could read their names real quick, I should have done that. I apologize. So the Engine One crew is Captain Corey Armstrong, Lieutenant Tim Wilson, firefighter Cindy Conrad. Notice some of the new ones, he just swore in, so their first fire, they did outstanding work. Firefighter Brittany Tooman and Zach Dobrik. And then, on Engine Two, which was the second arriving unit on scene, Lieutenant Jeff Noshal, firefighter Tim McGillan, firefighter Alex Good, firefighter Kirsten McGaham, and firefighter Austin Villett. So thank you guys very much.
That's always a good thing, see that. Interesting time, seeing the new ones coming in, which you got high school, you got younger people. There's a young man, Corey Armstrong. I'm singling him out, because I'm having a big class reunion in about two weeks, and I went to school with his parents to see him where he's at today. It's kind of surreal a little bit to watch. It's kind of impressed. Takes a lot to be a fireman, firefighter.
It should be noted that their performance is, it starts at the top, too, having a chief and, you know, command that we have. We're really fortunate to have these guys.
All right. Back to the bills. Joe?
Okay, thank you. So there was, there was some comments about having the bills, yeah. So the invoices from today are actually from 5/9 through 5/18, and here we are, July 10, approving them now. So that's something hopefully we can correct in the future and make sure we get the invoices the date of the approval of the bills, because in the past, like I said, in the past, we've been approving bills without knowing what we were approving. So that's one of the main reasons why I haven't been voting for the bills, because I can't approve something that I don't know what I'm passing. So that was my first leadoff comment, and I'll try to blow through this, so I'm not so long-winded. I did have a question on page, excuse me, let me pull up my first page. I'm curious as to page five, under the entry for 5-1, 2017, receipt, review, correspondence from city manager regarding status of request for temporary certificate of occupancy and related issues. I'm curious which business that was.
I believe it was the Mediterranean Restaurant.
Okay, obviously, that was straightened out, because now they're open today, so that answers my question. Thank you. Now, I'm curious about the research regarding Federals in the next entry underneath it on 5-1 as well. Research regarding federal and state requirements for ADA accessibility and barrier-free access. What was this about?
That relates to the same restaurant, TCO issue.
Great, okay. And I, okay. Next, on the same day, there were some entries regarding, on 5-1, 5-3, and also on a telephone conference with, on 5-8, on the next page, from actually the organization, the Second Chance Network. That's, those were the panhandlers on the side of the street that came in. I think they came in twice or three times this year, and they were staying for four or five days. Actually, I got reports of them knocking on windows and that sort of thing, but I'm curious, I thought when we addressed this two years ago as a council, that I asked a question point-blank, if I could start the Joe Rizzi needs fund, money fund, to stand out in the middle of the street, and you said yes, and there was no need to have a permit, it's a constitutional First Amendment issue, so I'm just curious why we had to spend.
issue. So I'm just curious why we had to spend over an hour working on this when it was about addressed two years ago.
Well, I spoke with representatives in the police department to make sure that everything was, that they had everything they needed, and that there weren't, we touched base on whether there were any policy changes or any change in direction that we wanted to bring to council or take a different position with respect to this group, knowing that it would impact all groups that want to engage in the same type of activity.
So was there any new information learned? I mean, are we still at the same Joe Rizzi Needs Money Fund? I could still do that, or, I mean, that's what we were told. So, has the position changed, or we're gonna let, if they come back, it's, what's the process? I mean, I'm looking at you, chief. Have they, they filled out the paperwork then?
Well, first of all, it should be understood that we have never and do not issue permits to any group or to any individual for soliciting in the streets. I believe it's a safety issue. My personal preference would be that nobody solicit in the streets, but we have to treat all groups alike, so it's a decision that council would have to make and then direct the city attorney to come up with something that, an ordinance that would withstand First Amendment muster, and that can be very tricky to do, knowing that if you do that, then you're impacting Kiwanis, Knights of Columbus, American Legion, VFW, and any other local group that also wants to solicit in the street. Whatever law or ordinance council ultimately enacts, provided it's constitutional, we will enforce it.
Okay, yeah, I guess my question was, you know, what did we need to speak to the, to the organization about specifically, if we're not accepting any permits or issuing permits?
I believe, I believe the redacted person, I was, I think it was Lieutenant Solvik that I spoke with, or, or Chief.
No, it says regarding telephone, well, correspondence.
The name, the name was redacted.
Okay.
And I think that was a mistake. It didn't need to be redacted. I'm pretty sure it was Lieutenant Solvik.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can say I did personally speak with one of the organizers at Second Chance Network, and the purpose of that conversation was to go over the ground rules again with that organization, to strongly caution them against violating our aggressive begging ordinance, because we do have that ordinance, which we can and will enforce.
Yep.
I also strongly cautioned them against interfering with traffic and told them that they could only be out in the street if they're going in the street when the direction of, or the lanes that they were in had a red light. Otherwise, we would be citing them for interfering with traffic. They also like to put out, this is their term, safety cones. They like to put out orange cones along the lane marking to, in my opinion, give them some semblance of legitimacy. I have told them every time that they are not allowed to place anything in the street, because that would be a city function or a county function, not their function.
So, yeah, I mean, of course, the Kiwanis or all of our local groups, 100%, I think that's wonderful. I, what I have concern with, and I'm glad to hear the response, that we are laying the ground rules, because I, I was on Facebook, I took some screenshots of nine or 10 different residents who flat-out said that this group was tapping on their windows, they were swearing at them, they were cussing at them, but of course, you have to actually physically see them, and the police can't be at it anywhere at one time. I get that, so, at the same time. So, I am glad that we are laying down the ground rules, because the last thing I want to see is our residents being harassed when they're sitting in a light. So, thank you for that. My next, and but, of course, that's up to council to see if we want to explore some sort of other ordinance. I would be in favor of taking a look at it as a council, but that's, I guess, another time, another discussion. Next, on page seven, there were a lot of discussion, there was a lot of entries regarding the budget. I was just curious if this was resulting of the Chicken Little letter, if that's what the research went into?
No. If you're referring to the letter where I advise council regarding the consequences of not passing a budget millage to correspond with the budget, that would be the letter, yes.
Okay, okay, that's what people are calling it, so, okay, thank you for clarifying.
No, just you.
No, I don't interrupt you, that's, that's fine. Next, on page eight, regarding on 5-24 and 5-25, there was conversations with the mayor, Councilmember Perezin, Councilmember Kramer, Councilmember Waddell, Councilmember Kibble. Some of these are lengthy discussions, point-two hours, point-two hours, point-two hours. And then, I think there's multiple entries, actually. I'm just curious if there was, if this was about the budget again, well, it says, yeah, regarding the budget and millage rate. I want to know, did you call them, or did they call you?
I called. I'll go on through that.
I think it was a combination of both, because we were trying to make sure that there were discussions about trying to set up a special meeting and to explain the various consequences and scenarios that might arise from not passing a millage along with the budget, and what the timeframes were, what moving parts were in play, and what the consequences might be.
Because the interesting thing that stood out to me was, I worked directly with Lynn. I mean, she helped me, I got the emails from her trying to set up the budget, the special meetings. The interesting thing that stood out to me was, the two council members that didn't speak to yourself regarding the budget was myself and Councilmember Kurzweil. So I didn't receive a phone call. So I don't know if there was any soliciting of votes or... Well, I just said I didn't receive a phone call.
No, but the difference is, I called, I didn't receive a phone call.
Okay, you didn't either. Okay, so, you didn't either, but you didn't, okay. So I don't know if there was any soliciting of votes or what that was about, but, you know, I don't, I didn't talk about the budget, so I just was, wanted some clarification. So thank you for that. And I think that's all the questions I had at this time. Thank you.
I had a couple. I've seen this on a couple of invoices, and, and I probably should have asked, can't remember if this was in May or April. What is this mediation with mediator regarding the police grievance? What is, what is that all about?
There is a grievance that has been filed by both the POAM and the POLC against the city regarding health insurance coverage. It has not been able to be resolved thus far and is now at, I believe it's called Step Five, where we're preparing to go into arbitration.
I guess I don't know, what do you mean, I thought that we covered, I thought that was, I have the handbook. I thought that's, we cover health insurance for the employees.
We do.
Well, what's the problem?
There is a disagreement between the two unions and the city regarding the level of coverage that they receive.
Should I be clearing the handbook, though? I mean, what, what, what do you mean?
I guess I don't understand.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So this arises as a dispute under the terms of the two police union contracts.
What isn't being covered? I mean, we've got a pretty generous policy. This is eating up a lot of time. This isn't the first time that I've seen this on here. So what are we not covering that they are that upset about, that they have to file a grievance when our health care covers just about every, what isn't being covered?
There is a disagreement with the allowed number of physical therapy visits per year, a disagreement with the level of prescription coverage, under what drugs are covered as generic, what are covered as brand, and what are covered as Tier Three and Tier Four medications. There is a disagreement related to how quickly they are obtaining reimbursement for co-pays, for doctor's visits, prescription coverage, and cover, reimbursement for their deductibles.
So it sounds like it's the, it's the type of medicine. So what a prescrip, what would a prescription three and four be? Would that be like?
Yeah, what's a prescription?
Prescription three, a Tier Three drug is, I believe Blue Cross, Blue Shield calls it a non-preferred generic. Tier Four is a non-preferred brand drug.
It's like wellness pills? Would that be considered a Tier Three or Tier Four?
When you say wellness, you're talking about like diet, those are called lifestyle drugs, and yes.
Is that, is that one of the disagreements?
Is that one of the disagreements?
Seems inappropriate that we're negotiating this in a public meeting.
No, the taxpayers are paying for it.
It's in, it's in arbitration.
Yeah, right.
Lynn's doing the best she can to answer the question, the circumstances.
It's on the invoices.
I, I understand it's on the invoices, but I understand that discussing this in open session puts us at a disadvantage going into arbitration.
We're paying for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, if, if this city is paying for lifestyle drugs for people, I got a real problem. I got a real problem. When you don't have the money to, to develop Volunteer Park, and you can't put enhancements in McCatty Park, and you can't get lights in the downtown because it's too expensive, you can't do facades, but somehow we're gonna find money for lifestyle drugs, I got a real problem with that. That's an attitude problem. You can't just go to the taxpayers and say, pay for everything. A lifestyle drug? I, I, I guess I have heard it all. Okay, page six, please. At 5-11, Tim, there was a telephone conference with the city manager, and part of that dealt with Knowles. What's going on at Knowles? I was just over there this weekend. Looks like they have about 17 homes either built or sold or lots.
I believe this is, there's a few, I think it relates to a proposal by the developer to address setback issues on several of the westernmost, southwest-most lots where the entrance to the development is, because of the elevation drop.
Those are the walkouts.
And they have some concerns about street trees and the additional trees that have to be planted, and there was a proposal, and I was asked to review it, figure out whether we have any problems under the planned development agreement, whether it needs to go to the planning commission and so forth.
I do want to say that those walkout, those walkout lots do look tight.
I do believe this went to the planning commission.
Yeah, I believe it did. It has to do with some of the smaller lots they are finding once they put the home on it. The PUD requires five trees, not including street trees, and what they're finding is if they plant five trees, some of these lots are small enough that people will not have a backyard.
Because they'll be all trees.
And so, we're looking to find a compromise for those individual lots.
Bank them, bank the trees?
What we're looking at is not so much banking the trees as offering smaller trees or foundational plantings.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a nice solution, Lynn. Next is the legal research regarding the tax levy issues and truth in taxation requirements. I did spend some time taking a look at that statute, and you were gonna get back with an opinion, Tim?
Yeah, I've not finished that yet.
What, what?
I believe the town, the, the city complied. I just have to put it in writing. It's my understanding the city complied.
Because when I read it, it looked like the city did not comply, because the whole point is, is, is that truth in taxation is to make sure the public understands what that mill is. And the mill kept changing every time there was another meeting. So how, how did the city comply with truth in taxation, giving the public notice of what the mill change was gonna be, when city council didn't even know themselves what the mill was gonna be?
It's my understanding there's a separate statutory amendment that allows the truth in taxation hearing and the public budget hearing to be, to take place at the same time, as long as there's a specific language used, that the millage rate will be the subject of the meeting.
There's a special form for that.
There's special language that has to be
That has to be in it.
In the notice, when you combine the truth in taxation and the budget hearing.
Was that in the notice?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Next, I, I don't know if I asked you this before, or if I asked Lynn. Do you do bankruptcy work? Are you a bankruptcy attorney?
I, I, I have practiced bankruptcy. I do not do a lot of bankruptcy, and I presume you're referring to the Michigan Seamless Two.
Yes. What is this all about in the, regarding the offer to acquire the city's claim? What is our claim?
We have, I believe it's outstanding
Water.
Unmetered water.
Yes.
There are several water connections, and due to the timing of the bankruptcy and the billing cycle for the various water accounts, there were unpaid bills which formed the basis of the city's proof of claim against the debtor.
Well, they can't pay within 90 days of filing the bankruptcy, because that would have been a preference action. So they couldn't pay, because they would have been preferring the city as a creditor over other creditors that were in the bankruptcy. So that's the preference action. So that's why they didn't pay it. So they owe the city money, let's say $30,000. What's this about regarding an offer to acquire the city's claim? Who wants to buy our claim?
There are other companies, there are companies that, and the city has received a solicitation to sell its claim against Michigan Seamless Two to them at a discounted price.
And what is that?
What is what? It's an offer to purchase the claim. You want to know the details of it? I don't know the details of it. I couldn't tell you that sitting here.
Okay, all right. Are you gonna have those details? Is there a time limit? Because that's an assignment of the claim. Do you have?
You want the details?
Uh, yeah, but it has to...
I didn't think the city, I discussed this with the manager, and I was, the discussion was, I did not see the city being interested in selling its claim at a discounted rate when it should be receiving 100% of the claim through the bankruptcy estate.
Well, is there a plan here?
Not that I'm aware of yet, but it was in the process.
So we don't, we don't know how we're gonna be paid back? We don't know if we're gonna be paid back?
I'd be happy to talk to you about this separately
That's okay.
In a non-public meeting where we can get into the details.
No, I, I know where this is...
I have some idea of what your questions are and can follow through on the answers.
No, I, I got the background. That's, I'm satisfied. I know where I'm going with it. Okay, thank you.
One more question for Attorney Wilhelm. On, on the minutes from the last time when we approved the, the bills, actually, yeah, the bills without the invoices on page one from the minutes, just regarding Councilman Rizzi stated there was a legal entry for April 21st for point-two-five hours of legal research regarding the budget process. And then you said that there was no charge for that entry, and then Council Rizzi stated that the no charge would still go towards the retainer, and then it says Attorney Wilhelm stated it would not, but he will check with his assistant to make sure it isn't happening. I was wondering if you had a chance to check with your assistant?
I did. The no charges do not count toward the 80-hour limit.
Good. And so what would justify as a no charge then? I can look at the contract if I have to, but, because sometimes we see on invoices, it's not really clear.
It's largely discretionary.
Sorry?
It's largely discretionary.
So you can decide what you charge us on and what you don't? So if the city manager just hypothetically said, hey, we want you to work on this in order to keep our hours below 80 hours?
Well, it's more, it's more along the lines of, I'm doing work on behalf of the city, and there are some things that are administrative, not substantive, that I decide to reflect that I'm doing work on behalf of the city, but I don't charge you for it.
So that concerns me, because if we have some discretion of what you can and can't bill us for, then how do we know that we're being charged for things we shouldn't?
His discretion, not ours.
Just to be clear, I can't bill you for things I don't do. There's, there's no indication or no implication that I'm billing for work that I don't do.
Okay.
This is a concession that I make to not bill you for work that I have done.
It's the least you can do, I guess, so...
So I'm gonna make the suggestion again, Lynn, that I've made a couple of times in the past. This has started long before the rest of us got up here. This has been going on before, and it's continuing.
I'm not sure you buy this.
Let me, let me finish. I'm not, I'm giving you some credit here, but you need to do your part, too. So, a lot of research goes into all this investigation from this end and this one here, and there's always a lot of comments about why, or what, or how things are not getting done, all related to our legal matters, which means there's a total lack of trust, a total lack of respect, because no one else is showing it, and it's not done in such a way that I feel as though that you're getting the opportunity to explain it, you're getting the opportunity to explain it except in front of camera all the time.
We don't get the invoices.
Let me, let me finish it. I agree. They should come out sooner.
So how are we supposed to ask questions?
They should come out sooner.
So how are we supposed to ask questions without the invoices?
My other question is, it's not gonna go away, so I, there's an agenda here.
I guess the same to Bob Martin about?
Let me finish, Joe.
Okay.
This takes up a lot of our time and a lot of, it's ridiculous how far we go with this. It's a total in-depth, completely down underneath every number that's being paid, and we're supposed to be giving our city manager and giving our lawyer the respect that they're doing their job they're supposed to be doing. If there's certain questions that come up once in a while, that's why we're supposed to bring it up. Not every single number on the agenda or on the billing. We should be getting these a little sooner. I agree with that. That would help us and allow you to ask those questions ahead of time, so you don't have to do it here at the meeting like you are tonight. I think we'd get a better answer probably, quite frankly. Both of you would.
May I respond?
Yes.
I think your position is irresponsible to the taxpayers. I think it's a very shallow look at what government is all about. I'm not here to speed through a meeting, so John, you can go back and sit on your bar stool. I'm here to look at these bills. I'm here to question them. I am to look behind them. I am to question anybody I need to question in order to ensure that the taxpayers' money is being spent properly. If that's offensive to you then, John, then maybe public service is not what you are meant to be, because this is what public service is about. You get into the nitty-gritty, you look at these bills, you hold people accountable. I've only asked four or five questions on these bills and that's it. So to sit here and say that people are, you know, doing things in front of the camera, whatever, you know what, John? You come to a meeting and you ask some questions. You look at these bills. You start holding people accountable. Start being a leader. Thank you.
In response to that, I do ask the questions, and I talk to our city manager. I don't do it in front of a camera. I try to do things respectfully. I try to get the answers to questions that I might have that come up on anything that's on the agenda. Obviously, getting a word in edgewise with a few people in this council is very difficult, and I think the people see what's going on, so you can say what you wanna say. If you wanna make it personal, don't go there. I'm just giving you that notice.
This is, you know, the reoccurring event that, and it's been said time and time again, Joe had questioned some of the billings that were in there about specific council members having talked to Tim, because we're taking the responsibility of finding the answers when it's not necessary to waste the entire public's and this board's time fleshing out things that are really kind of incidentals. So when you get your answer, you just kind of move on. Anything that was important to the public to know would end up being brought back to the council at the meeting, would be presented to the public so that they understood exactly what the circumstances were. I'm pleading with you guys to please be responsible, and just call Tim so he can get a direct answer. If you can't get the answer, then you can certainly get it. By the time the next meeting comes around, you can ask it in public, and he'll have a comprehensive answer for you. And Joe, to your comment about how late we're getting these bills, I'm quite confident any Johnson-Rosati bill that you found any kind of, you contested and needed a further explanation for, or the explanation was insufficient, we could negotiate whether or not there was a necessity to pay that bill. So I'm sure that these guys would end up being honest and earnest enough to delete something that didn't seem appropriate, so, please, let's move in the right direction here.
But your friends get to attack us, but we can't respond.
Everybody has made, listen, listen. Okay. We never, you know.
This is really getting out of control. I mean, this is embarrassing.
I guess obviously what we said the last time didn't sink in.
We say that every meeting.
Move on, John.
We're moving on.
Prove the agenda.
No, somebody has to approve it.
We have to.
I made the motion that we approve the bills.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Knew that was coming.
You want a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilman Kibble?
Absolutely.
Councilman Rizzi?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Waddell?
Yes, finally.
Councilman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
No.
Prove the agenda.
So I have a comment on the agenda, if I allow to speak, before we vote on the group. So, one of the things that we had going on, especially in 2015, was we had a lot of closed-session meetings, which, in my opinion, weren't needed, and I think other people would say weren't needed as well, things that should've been brought out in the open and discussed in the open. So one of the things that I actually campaigned on and brought to attention was that I did believe the city was violating the Open Meetings Act by attending, having these meetings without due cause. So, since then, the city has actually done a great job in actually not having these closed meetings over every little discussion that could be worked out at the council table, and has been doing a great job. So, with that said, I understand the Open Meetings Act. I'm very familiar. I know that when it comes time to contract negotiations, that is permissible event to go into a closed session. That's not my point. My comment is that, you know, I've sat at this council table for six years, and I'm really starting to wise up, and that's every time we go into these closed, you know what, I'm trying to say how it grown, I don't need the off cuff remarks here, but, okay, there was.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
I didn't hear a thing.
That's fine. You can play that game. But anyhow. Anyhow, so, we have gone into closed session about these contracts, and then we come out, we discuss them, and they're already negotiated upfront, and basically, council just rubber stamp what was negotiated, and there wouldn't be much back and forth, and it would be a done deal, and ultimately, I think the taxpayers would be getting the brunt of it, so.
You presume a lot.
Well, okay, so, again, interrupted. So, my point is, with this particular contract that we're gonna be reviewing, my understanding is that it's a foiable document, that if anybody could just send a FOIA request and be able to get it if they'd like, I would prefer that it's actually discussed in the open, and we don't go into closed session. Now, I know attorneys would advise against that because, strategy, but in my opinion, once we come out of closed session, it's probably gonna be approved anyway. So, I think it's, we owe it to the taxpayers to review this in the open, exactly what we're reviewing, what we're voting on, because in my opinion, there's a lot of Cadillac benefits here that the average taxpayer does not receive. Ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent do not receive these type of benefits, and they wanna know what we're voting on and we're approving. So, with that being said, my recommendation is to discuss the contract in open session and not go into closed session, and I'm bringing this up now because we have to approve the agenda and it calls for a closed session.
Mr. Mayor, that document is not foiable until it is ratified by both parties. It is not a public document at this time, and therefore not subject generally to public discussion. That puts the city at a disadvantage in the negotiations.
And that's what I just claimed, and, but, you know, council has a right to.
But you're talking about discussing this contract in open session.
That's right. That's right.
That puts us at a disadvantage. That gives them the upper hand.
Well, we already approved the invoice for twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven hundred dollars. The negotiation's already done.
No, it isn't, so.
It's not done until the contract is ratified.
It's not done.
Explain it again, Lynn.
Counsel, I understand it very well. Counsel can waive the right to its confidentiality.
Do you realize what you're suggesting?
I'm saying we should discuss it in the open.
Seriously, think about what you're suggesting. Think about it. We have not approved this contract. If we have reasons why we want to not approve this contract, you wanna have that in an open meeting, why?
Yeah, I think the public should know.
So that if we go to mediation and arbitration, it is on the record.
You've thought about this, Joe?
All right, well, I state my opinion.
I'd like to make a comment on this point. The closed session will come to a vote. Those naysayers have an opportunity to vote no at that time. It'll be a roll call vote. It's on the agenda. There's no reason to try to change the agenda. You get the chance to vote no before we go into closed session or on the subject of going into a closed session. Thank you.
Not simply vote no, you also get the opportunity to opine about what your views are on the contract.
Oh, please, no.
In open session, but nonetheless, we can get the benefit of our legal advice on whether or not, what the assets and what the pitfalls of the contract might end up being. You wanna have that so you can deliberate about it, have a moment to talk amongst ourselves, to see the upsides and downsides, and if you don't agree with the consensus when we vote, you can always make your opinion known.
Very clear. Very clear. I'm just, you know, we have these invoices.
That's the Open Meetings Act. That's what that's all about.
I'm very familiar, so the.
Apparently not.
Yeah, you've missed the vote on that routinely.
You always wanted to go closed sessions. That's your prerogative. That's fine, but.
Joe, you said already, we haven't gone into closed session at all this last couple of years.
And the same opportunity has existed all along. If you had a misgiving, you could've made your opinion made.
You're gonna lay all the cards on the table during the negotiation?
All right, I'd be safe to say after we come out of closed session, we will be approving exactly what's in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Rizzi.
Well, that may happen. Who knows?
Mike Kramer.
I'll bet you call mine.
Joe, when you go into negotiations with a seller, you're a purchasing agent, right, do you discuss what your company discusses before they go into negotiations with the seller, or do you just have an open negotiation with the seller and tell them everything that your company wants to do and what they don't wanna do?
See, the difference is that we have already been billed for the twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Significant time has already been spent on the negotiation, and it's all been done. We are more or less a formality in approving it.
You are presuming a lot right now.
That's fine.
You are?
That's fine.
Because I have serious questions about this contract. So you're presuming a lot right now.
Well, I guess we'll see how we vote at the end. That's fine.
So it's your suggestion that we go into open meeting and discuss this contract that has not been ratified by the city or this council?
I state in my opinion.
Well, I wanna make sure I understand your opinion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. I do want to remind council that, and for the public, that problems with closed meetings has been a problem with this council. And I do wanna remind council that taking something into a closed session is not a mandatory sort of right that you have under the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act says a public body may meet in a closed session only for the following reasons, not shall meet. So you do not have to take a collective bargaining issue into a closed meeting at all. So for those council members that think you have to do it, you are in error, and I would suggest, once again, that you read the Open Meetings Act, 'cause you do not have to take a collective bargaining agreement into a closed meeting. Number two, I don't consider this to be a highly detailed in the sense that it's gonna affect our bargaining position one way or the other. The numbers are pretty clear, and it's just a matter of policy. There's nothing wrong with letting the public understand what the policy issues are with respect to this contract. Generally, with labor contracts, you're dealing with three issues. You're dealing with retirement, you're dealing with wages, and you're dealing with more time off. That's about it, what you're gonna get in a labor agreement. I mean, that's common knowledge. Everybody knows it, and those are your three main issues. And I'm not really sure, I did not read the summary letter that came from the Johnson-Rosati Law Firm. Didn't have an interest in it, but all I can say is my experience has taught me that collective bargaining is our three main issues. And those issues, to me, are not that sensitive that the public cannot sit back and listen to the discussion, particularly when all three of those issues pertain to their pocket and their wallet.
Tempting.
So.
The motion is on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Obviously.
Councilman Kibble?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Parisian?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Waddell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kramer?
Yep.
And Councilmember Kurtzwell?
No.
Public comment. Carl?
Greetings, council, Mr. Mayor. Carl Richards, 390 Lennox. I hope this comes through, 'cause the last council meeting, you couldn't hear my voice very well. I just wanna give you a heads-up alert on a few things, and just as it goes. We are having some copying irregularities behind the counter. I'll just show you a copy of one of the things I normally get, which is a calendar, that I keep track of what's going on, and no matter what we put into the instructions, it has a mind of its own. It prints something else. Now, I'm not gonna go into details, but Judy can alert you to it, a little bit finer tuned than that, but I just thought you should know that our machinery isn't working exactly like we'd like it to. Okay, I wanna make mention of some victories for the DPW at our historic village. The historic people like myself didn't pick this up, but the DPW did. The deck at the rear of the schoolhouse collapsed, okay? Just felt blue, okay? And they were right on it and roped it off and got in it, and the next few days, and replaced and repaired the whole thing, and they're probably gonna paint it up pretty soon. Also, we didn't catch this either. Water main broke in the middle of our historic village lawn, one of our sprinkler connections. It was a big one, and we had water squirting out all over the place. Anyway, they got right on that one and dug it up and repaired it forthwith, and it's working perfectly again now. Also, I just wanna make mention that our friends at Tube Mill are in their second week of their annual shutdown repair period, and they started just before the holiday, okay? And I thought I should mention that, 'cause we all appreciate the break. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Hi, folks. Josie Kearns, 329 Line Boulevard. I just wanted to let you know of the Art and Cars event that's coming up July 26th. It's three o'clock to nine-thirty, and it's part of the Cruisin', and we have a lot of artists coming out, Jeff Baderak and some other wonderful artists and stuff that are gonna be coming out and stuff, and it's gonna be a very cool event, our first dip into the art fair area. And I also wanted to thank council members who came to the Sustainable Art and Sound Art Show. It was wonderful to see Maggie and Joe and Glenn there, and other people wanted to come, and that's okay, but could get there later maybe, but it was a great show, and I have all the evaluations that I'll share with you next time. But anyway, but it was, it's really great, so I can't wait for this to happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josie.
Okay, old business. Review the vacation accrual policies from other Michigan communities to identify how the council would like to share the new department head, city manager, and collectively bargain vacation accrual policy. Lynn?
Okay, we've been discussing this for a couple of meetings, and I had presented a policy last meeting that the council was not acceptable to, and as I was drafting the policy for the admin and non-union staff for the personnel policy, I realized that it might be at an advantage to get direction from the council policy-wise on vacation accrual, not just for that group, but for future collective bargaining. What I have provided to you is copies of vacation policies from eight different communities in the state of Michigan, some that allow, as we discussed the last meeting, one half of the earned vacation being carried over, others allowing a partial payout at the end of each fiscal year or employee tenure year, with some carryover, freezing the banks and eliminating some of the different things, with a fifty percent payout at retirement. There's a lot of different options, so as I said, I wanted more direction from the council before I bring another draft policy before you.
Most of these are more specific to bargaining units, though, aren't they, as opposed to department heads?
They came out of either emails from their city managers or directly from their general city personnel policy handbooks. While we have a overall city personnel policy handbook, each of the collective bargaining agreements have a lot of the policies, including vacation. including vacation accrual, things like that, written into them that are different than the overall handbook.
John, if I may. You know, I was vocal about this, so this shouldn't come as any surprise. The, I've spoken to a lot of people and I would say, I don't have the statistic in front of me, but I'd be safe to say that 95, if not 99, if not 95%, 99%, do not, are not allowed to, to have unlimited vacation time and carry it over. Now, I know that that's what we're trying to change. I get that. But majority of the workforce does not have this. The majority of the workforce does not have pensions. The majority of the workforce doesn't have Cadillac benefits. They're struggling. They're, they're struggling for paying healthcare. Even people who have some, some disposable income, they, they're spending thousands of dollars on their healthcare. And, and they're, they're not getting the same kind of benefits. They're not getting this. So what I've been hearing from the community is that they think this should have been changed years ago. And to add insult to injury, people are looking at this and they're saying, well, we just passed the largest tax increase in almost two decades. And as a taxpayer, what am I getting out of this? They're not getting much. So with that being said, my position, and it hasn't changed from the last meeting, is I'm only going to approve a contract if it's use it or lose it. And I will be allowing that five days can be carried over and that's it. And no payout, but if you want to use five days, you got something special coming up or it's next year, you want to use an extra week or whatever the case may be, you can carry over those five days. But we need to stop this hemorrhaging, hemorrhaging, because we have $5 million in unfunded liabilities. I don't even know what the number is. It's probably over 5 million by now. It's 4.9 earlier this year. There's no plan for that. Next year, the budget, 18, 19 budget is already in a deficit. I heard, I thought I heard 300,000, but then I heard 180,000. Regardless, it's, something needs to be done. We're looking at, unless we start getting serious, we're looking at more tax increases next year and that scares people. So quite frankly, it doesn't, I don't take into consideration what other communities do. I don't think we're gonna lose, this doesn't apply to our fire department who, who, quite frankly, we had so many new firefighters step up and they don't get nearly any of these benefits. It's, it's a shame. It's really tragic that we don't offer more to our firefighters. But yet other departments and employees get much more. They get so much more than the people who are jumping into buildings and, not to take anything away from other employees, I'm just saying that it's, it, it needs to be some balance here. So what other cities do and other communities do, that has no bearing on my decision. And my decision is use it or lose it, plus you can carry over five days. Two cents.
I propose a two-year cap, five days carryover per year with maximum 10 days. You can bank.
When you say a two-year cap, you're talking.
I think you do five days. Right now, my company, and I'm, I'm looking at this personally, I can carry over five days or 40 hours, but I, I lose it. I mean, I can't bank it for the next year if I don't use it. So my suggestion is doing five-year, or five, 40 hours per year with a cap of a maximum of 80 hours in a two-year period.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Then after, after the two-year period, if you're not losing them, using them, then you're gonna lose them afterward.
Yeah. I suggested five days between 40 hours.
That's pretty much how our company operates as well. Kind of changed just recently.
You'll have to explain that. First year.
Five days, max, 40 hours.
So I carry over.
Five days.
Next year, I'm gonna carry over five days. Okay?
Right.
And then what's the other?
If you don't, if the next year, you say you get 25 days or 20 days and you only use 15 of them. You can carry over at, at up to an additional five days or 40 hours. But the cap can never exceed in the two, for two, I mean, you can never exceed or go beyond 80 hours based on two years of carryover. So if you don't, if you max out cap after two years at 80 hours, even if you carry over an additional five days year three, you can't bank it.
It caps out at 80 is what you're saying. So the difference between what I propose and you is one week, yeah, one more week.
One more year, two, two weeks, maximum of 80 hours. That's it.
So would this apply to, is your goal, I'm just asking personally, to apply this to the negotiation, the, the unions? Or do you want to start and then?
Well, that's the.
That's gotta be negotiated, Joe.
Yeah, that's my proposal right now for the department heads and the non-union.
They don't get paid?
No, no, you, you bank what you have right now.
I'm saying going forward.
Going forward.
Yeah, I think we all agree that we're.
Right, but they do not get paid for any unused vacation time going forward. Going forward whenever this policy comes into effect.
Right. They can try five days over, maximum of 10 days going forward in the future.
I think we need to say that no vacation pay, no vacation time, that, that's where you have to work it a little bit. Is because it appears that the handbook permits some payment of vacation time if they retire.
Correct.
But it does not permit payment of vacation time if they're fired or terminated, let's say.
No, if you have accrued vacation time, no matter how you leave the city, the city's required to pay it. If you retire, you're not eligible for any of your banked or accrued sick time unless you retire. If you retire, I believe it's 50%. If you are fired or resign, you get no sick time.
Well, I don't want to be paying for any banked vacation time. The, the incentive here is to use it or lose it, not to financially gain by rolling it over. If you, if you have a reason to, to bank vacation time because you're gonna take a trip to Europe, then that's one thing. But to bank it because you think you're gonna get paid, the whole point of it is to get the city out of these contingent liabilities. So I guess I could go with what Mike is proposing, but I think it also needs to say that any banked time or crew time rolled over into any year shall not be paid.
Oh, so you don't want to freeze? For instance, if I have $100 banked right now and we switch to a new policy.
You get what you have now.
Okay, we freeze it in time, the hundred.
We freeze it in time, beginning until January 1st.
Okay.
We established that in the last.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna get paid. They earned it. They have every right for that pay. It's moving forward. They want to roll it over, roll it over. But guess what? You're not gonna make money off of it.
Right.
So what you're saying is the maximum vacation time they could be paid for is whatever their annual accumulation is.
Whatever their annual accumulation is not what they've banked, yeah.
So, so for example, if they get five weeks and they only use three weeks and then they retire, they could get paid.
Yeah, three weeks. Well, unless they get five weeks and have two weeks banked. And even if they've used two weeks, they would still get paid for five because there's no way to determine whether the hours they used were the banked hours or the new hours.
That's fine.
So now that we, now that we specify, clarified that you're not getting paid any banked hours, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be too many employees that want to save up two months or a whole year or something like that.
If you had five weeks in your last year and you had two, two weeks banked, you'd get paid for seven.
Exactly.
Seven weeks.
Right. That's what I stated.
Right. That's my proposal.
No, that seems appropriate. Now, how does that align with the, the unions?
Each of the individual union contracts have different vacation accrual policies.
PD is the, the highest, right? Don't they have 40?
PD is not highest.
No.
EPW is 40.
The clerical union has 30-day carryover. There might be a union that has 40, but I'm not sure. But PD is not highest.
Well, that's a good starting point though. I mean, gives us something to reflect on. We can look more closely at those union contracts and make sure that we're not getting way out of skew for department heads.
Lynn, are you gonna have a draft of this by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You did some nice work on this.
Thank you.
This is a lot of work. Thank you.
Okay, new business. Consider authorizing the purchase of three sets of structural firefighting turnout gear as requested in the fiscal year 18 budget to include waiving the formal bidding process of the city chief.
Okay. Hopefully it's somewhat self-explanatory. This was budgeted. This is kind of one of those annual things. The sets usually put us over the 5,000 mark. We did contact four vendors. We put together a, a group of a subcommittee of three firefighters. They came up with the recommendation for the vendor. Their goal was, was not fiscally driven, but it did turn out at the end of the day that what they recommended is indeed the cheapest of the three we received back. I know there's a very strong sentiment by council of wanting to do this to bid. We, we can do that. I don't know that that's really gonna change a whole lot. The way, the, there's gear manufacturers like Ford GM, Dodge, Chrysler. And I won't have another vendor, so they would like to go with the Globe gear based on fit test, based on performance. We won't have another vendor bid Globe. They're, they sell them regionally. So we, we could have other vendors bid other gear, but it wouldn't be the gear that that committee recommended. So that is, I, I, there, there won't be another Ford dealer bid a Ford product.
Okay.
You'd like to have everybody same turnout gear across the board?
Yes, we, we are switching vendors this year. We, we were previously using Apollo Fire with, with Lion gear and we had both manufacturing service issues. So it, it turned out that we, even had they come in low bid, we would absolutely have tried not to go with them because of the, the performance issues we've, we've had. So they would like to go with Globe based on fit testing, based on, given the memo that was provided by Lieutenant Nochel to myself. I wanted the firefighters to have a kind of a, an objective performance. I said, don't, don't worry about the fight. Let me know what you guys want and then let me worry about the finance part. So that's what they did. It just so happened that what they came back with was the least expensive gear. So again, we, I'm, if, if the decision by council is to do a competitive bid, we can. But I will not get another competitive bid for Globe gear. It'll be the same three or four vendors bidding gear. Yes, it's all turnout gear, but again, it won't be, it'll be a bid from Ford, it'll be a bid from GM, it'll be a bid from Chrysler. This is very spec, this is very specific.
This is all budget stuff too, so.
Yes, it's, it is over the, yeah, it's over the five grand, which is why I, it's being brought in tonight. And the reason why I said that was because, for example, when I was talking about earlier about the, and this isn't you, I'm just talking about the policy and why I'm trying to implement it. When I was talking about the, the fountain, we were told that this is very specific and only one supplier had it. And I literally did a Google search and in 10 minutes I found 50 different suppliers that made it. So, but this is not the case. So that's why I think this is great that you're, and it's great to see your firefighters doing all the research. I mean. Yeah, the, the crew did a, a great job with that. And one thing I did like, there was a comment about trending towards that it's fit for athletic build. And I, I can tell you, you were talking about the, the marathon that the lady was running and her family. And I see the firefighters at Powerhouse all the time and it's, it's, you guys are going in the right direction. We've had a, a great change towards physical fitness, physical fitness, conditioning and. Just a side note, I know it doesn't have to do with, but it just, it was mentioned and I wanted to acknowledge that because you guys are doing a great job with that. Thank you. Thank you.
I have some questions on the bidding process. I don't understand why this is not a competitive bid. You have three bids here. Why is this not?
The bid process, to my understanding, is that it's sealed bids and that it has to be posted. Like, we did that for the fire truck purchase a couple of years back. And so for the, for the bid ones, it's, it's been a, we, we do a request for proposals. There's a 30-day period. We do a, a bid opening. That was my understanding of the official, I guess by the book, competitive bid process. I think in the charter, yeah, it spells it out very clear.
With notice.
With, with notice and, and there's, there's sealed bids and, and we didn't do sealed bids with this. We, we just, we contacted the vendors and asked them to quote it, so. And that's a good question because I think in the past, it, it's just been really willy-nilly sometimes, not with your department. In my opinion though, I know we can't change the charter, but to me personally, it qualifies. If you have due diligence of showing who you contacted, what kind of response it was, you have the quotes, the breakdown, it's all legitimate and that, that qualifies. It doesn't necessarily need to be sealed. And I mean, that just may delay your quote process and getting you what you need. Yeah, I'm just trying to, trying to meet the tenets of the charter.
Well, my, my thing is, is I'm gonna attach this to the minutes because last year we did three waivers of the bid. One, I think, was for Fire. Fulham was one. And there was another one, DPW, I think.
Streetsweaver?
I think. So we had three waivers of bids. And particularly in the DPW waiver of the bid, we did not place in the record any of the bids. Just, we just took somebody's word for it. And I think a better practice, and Tim, you might disagree, but I think a better practice when you're waiving the bid is to make sure that those bids come in, they become part of the record. And I'm gonna ask that the companies that fire chief contacted become part of the minutes tonight so that if the city ever got audited, there would be at least some paper trail that they, that the city made some effort to engage in providing accurate information before you waive the bid. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because the paper is really doing a, a very, very good job talking about finances of cities. And their latest article was the sloppy finances fixed at Charnar Township of Plymouth, which is right down the road. And one of the things that they found out when they went in, the new administration went in just recently, is that they discovered no record of actual bids from any companies on their bidding. And I think if you're following the Chicago finances, the Chicago school system is having serious legal problems because they weren't following bidding practices. I mean, I think that's gonna probably end up in, in criminal stuff. But I think that we need to sort of understand that waiving these bids is not considered, at least in my view, a, a normal, acceptable business practice and that we should make an effort to work with how our ordinance is in terms of competitive bidding. And if we're going to waive the bid, then the department head requesting the waiver really needs to come in with some very detailed information as to who you contacted, when you contacted, and everything else. So that's gonna be my position on waivers of bids.
Now, Mike, this, the, the reason we don't want to end up doing the bid thing is simply because the manufacturer is specific to the one vendor.
Correct.
So, I mean, all that other stuff is, is all good, but, and they end up being the low bid anyway. So that works out quite nicely. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract with first due fire supply for the, the Globe Extreme, G Extreme III outfit specked out by the, the fire department and waiving the bid process due to the specific nature of the, the product being the, the spec product that they're looking for.
I have a motion to do a support.
So is that a combination motion?
Yeah, it was actually. Would you like them to be broken down separately?
Well, I, I would try and hit that language in the proposed, suggested motion where you're stating, hitting the language in the ordinance to waive that there will be no advantage to the city that would result from the competitive bidding. That's the reason for the waiver.
So you have to show.
Well, that isn't actually the, the reason. The reason is because the gear is specific to what they're looking for. I mean, that is the competitive benefit, I guess.
Then you don't have a reason then to have a, a waiver to violate the ordinance.
So.
You need to show, and I, and we had this discussion at the last meeting.
Well, you do your storytelling thing and, and.
It's not storytelling. You're. It's not storytelling. You're a violator of the ordinance.
Right. Go ahead and do your storytelling.
So, do it right, and comply with the ordinance. If the facts are not there to waive the bidding process, then the facts aren't there. I'm not gonna make 'em up. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. You go to the competitive bidding process. So, you decide. And additionally, if you do go to the competitive bidding process, it is not true that you have to take the lowest bid. That's not true.
Oh, I never said that, yeah.
Okay, well, it was said down there, the lowest bid.
No, it just happens to be the lowest bid.
What it says is, is that it shall award the contract to the lowest competitive bidder meeting specifications unless council determines that the public interest will be better served by accepting a higher bid. So, you can accept a higher bid, but you need to put the facts on the record.
I make a motion that we approve the first due fire supply, the contract with first due fire supply being the lowest bidder for the turnout gear. How's that?
Waive the competitive bid first.
He's got four bids, three that responded with prices. It's the lowest bid. I mean, that seems perfectly in compliance with our bidding process.
Did you publish the notice?
No, we didn't, which is why-
Because you didn't think you were gonna do a competitive bid.
I didn't see an advantage to the competitive bid, which is why I'm here tonight. So, again, I'm happy to go back if that's the purview of council.
Why do you think that there's no advantage to the city to, to bid out this product? Will it cost the city more if they have to go and bid it out? Will the city have to incur more expenses? Is this a time-sensitive thing in which you need to get the product in now, and going to a competitive bid will delay your opportunity to get this in right away? What are some facts?
So, as, as was specified, there's a lead time, and for this vendor, the lead time was six to eight weeks. So, we would like to get the gear in. The issue is, so, Globe is the manufacturer that we'd like to go with. There's a Michigan rep for Globe, and another, another Globe rep won't bid for the territory. So, we, the vendors won't bid against themselves, is the issue for that specific manufacturer. So, we could get the bids for, again, the Fire Decks, or the Lion, or potentially the Janesville. Those are the types of bids that we will receive. The company won't allow its vendors to bid against themselves.
There is also an advantage to the city in terms of the cost of bidding this out. If we were to do a sealed closed bid, we would have to publish it in the newspaper, as well as on our website, and notify all of the manufacturers. The cost of that publication is substantial. If you remember from our budget last year, for the ordinances and other things that we did have to publish, we spent a significant amount of money on publishing. To do publishing for a bid process such as this, when there are four manufacturers, we've talked to each of them, as opposed to speaking to them and asking them to provide a sealed bid, there is a cost benefit to the city not to do the sealed bid.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Okay, so, there's your facts.
If I understand, the fire department has identified the specifications of the equipment that it prefers, and it's narrowed that down through some other manufacturers. There is only one regional supplier of that, that equipment, and it would be impractical to have a competitive sealed bid among other suppliers of the same manufacturer with the same specifications due to the distance and the regions these suppliers service.
No, they won't compete with each other anyway.
There's, there's one dealer price that they're gonna basically quote, so-
Thus, there's no advantage to a competitive bidding process for that specification of the equipment that this fire department is looking to obtain.
Those are the facts you need to get out.
It's unique.
Would you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's why this discussion's healthy, because as we, as I mentioned, I'm sorry to beat this point, but it's very clear. Last meeting, we were told that we had, we waived the competitive bid process, and I was able to find, I didn't get the competitive bids, but I could if I wanted to, when there was clearly didn't need to be waived. So, it's not about the police gear, I'm sorry, the fire gear. This is something you need, it's clearly unique, but having this discussion, we didn't have until recently, and now that we're having it, I think, in my opinion, it's good to have this discussion to make sure we're doing things by the book, or at least documenting what we're doing, so.
John, I have a question, before we move forward with the motion. Just out of curiosity, and I am not well-versed in how this works at all, but the gear that you're no longer using, do you recycle it? Do you scrap it? Can we get any money from that, or is it completely damaged? How does that work?
No, we're still, we're still using. The gear has a 10-year shelf life, and so, the idea is that we're purchasing two to three sets every year, so we don't run into an issue where we have all this gear that's in this desperate circumstance. There's a lot of cities, Detroit being one of them, basically found themselves where they had no compliant gear. And so, I'm trying to do due diligence with our budgeting, that we do two, three sets every year, so we're never, I'm never coming to you and saying, "I need gear for the whole department," and that's a hundred K price tag. So, this, just as, as we get people on, we move it to training gear after that 10-year mark, and then when it's just basically fallen apart, we actually get, we, we can't sell it in the U.S. Historically, we've donated it to South American fire departments.
Oh, okay.
Is what most departments in this area do, so.
Thank you for the insight, and also, I mean, we appreciate that strategy being as our budget. We will, I don't know if it would be able to handle all of the new gear if you came at us at one time.
And that's, that's the idea, is that we're, we're basically constantly filling the bucket, so there's never a catastrophic rod of compliance.
That's right. Thank you.
It was never seconded.
Oh, it was never, okay. I'll make the motion, then, then we waive Section 2-224, the city of South Line code ordinances, approval for purchases or contracts over $2,000, $2,000, competitive bidding for purchases or contracts over $5,000, for the reason that there's no advantage to the city, no advantage to the city would result from competitive bidding for the reasons set forth by Chief Kennedy, our city attorney, and our city manager.
Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We needed to get that on the record, thank you.
Then I'll make the motion that we award the purchase of three sets of firefighting turnout gear to first due fire supply for $6,250 and $29,000.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Mike.
Has good work on the, has good work on the research on that.
Good job, chief.
Consider the first reading of the ordinance, an amendment, rezoning partial 21-30-126-003, West End Industrial Park, from L1, which is Light Industrial, to our M1, which, district, which is a multiple-family residential.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Carmen Avantini with CIB Planning, the city planning consultant, and you have the rezoning request before you for West End Industrial. Now, this has gone before the planning commission. We recommended denial of the rezoning request to the planning commission, and they also are recommending denial of the request to you. And I'm just gonna give you a summary of the reasons that that recommendation's being made. First, one of the foremost reasons is that the property is master plan for industrial. That's what the, the previous master plan and the current master plan has it identified as, the future land use. The proposed zoning, the residential zoning, is not compatible with the tube mill property, which is located to the south and east of this property. Actually, it butts the property, and, you know, residential abutting industrial was something that was of great concern to the planning commission. The, we also felt that the applicant didn't provide sufficient evidence that the property can't be used for any of the uses in that particular zoning district. That's one of the standards that we look at, that they have to show, that they can't reasonably use the property for any of those uses. Another is that the proposed residential use would not be compatible with the tube mill operations. It's not really good transitional use. Usually, when you go from what's an I2, that's a very, more of a heavy industrial use, you look to transition to residential uses, especially single-family residential uses that are on the perimeter, with maybe office, or, you know, in-between type intensity uses, as opposed to going right into the, into the residential like that. And there's also, and that was expressed at the planning commission meeting, need to retain the limited amount of industrially-zoned land that we have in the city. Now, please keep in mind that when we do this evaluation, as does the planning commission, that we're looking at the information that's been provided to us by the applicant, okay? So, we base our recommendations on the information before us, not only the zoning ordinance and the master plan and the like, but also the information that they've submitted. They did submit information to us, and one of the questions they raised is the financial feasibility of developing this property for the industrial uses. And so, as a result, you have a report from Fuller Appraisal that starts to look at that, look at the information they provided, and look at the numbers and the feasibility of developing this property. Another thing we are having prepared that isn't complete yet, that you don't have before you yet, is Row Engineering's preparing an alternate layout that looks at what kinds of, because one of the comments they made at their presentation is that these parcels in this industrial complex are not large. They're narrow, they're long, and as a result, we wanted to make sure that we fully investigated whether there are uses in buildings in the current zoning district that would be compatible, that could be constructed in that development. And once that happens, what would be the cost implications? So, we'd like to have that completed, and then have our appraiser take another look at that information, to see if that changes in any way, shape, or form the information that he has provided to us. So, that's information that's not completed yet, and we're hoping to get that within the next couple of weeks. Engineers right now are just very busy. It's hard to get anybody to do a project like that, and then to do it quickly is even more challenging, so, but we've-
I'm sorry, are you asking Row to look at a different configuration, or whether or not the one that's existing is, is valid?
That's a good question. To look at the, the existing with the current road layout that's in the roads that are in, to look at that layout, and the parcels that were planned for that development, and what could go in, and what, in that configuration, whether it would be feasible, whether you could get enough units in there to make it financially feasible to develop that reasonably. Might not be the optimum from a profit end of things, but at least reasonable, which is our charge under the zoning ordinance. We have to provide reasonable use of the property. So, that's additional information that I think is gonna, I think we need to look at. I wish we'd had it when the rezoning request came in. We didn't. We're, it would've been really nice if we had it provided by the applicant, but we didn't have that. But it's something that we need to take a look at, and really, and give the appraiser an opportunity to look at it also. So, with all of that, we had, we have recommended denial of the rezoning request. We don't think that they've proven, that they've met all of the criteria in the, that we go by when we look at rezoning requests such as this, and of, you know, really of utmost concern in my mind, and I expressed to the applicants from day one, is that, no, you can't hear the tube mill operating today because they're in shutdown, but most times when you come out of the meeting, you can hear the tube mill operating. And in putting additional residential units, particularly owner-occupied, because you have less ability to move, that close to the tube mill is a concern. That's why we have zoning, because a long time ago, during the Industrial Revolution, we had people putting in major industrial plants next to residential districts in New York City, and they invented zoning to provide a transition of uses. So, we have a very similar situation here, where we're gonna have residential properties directly next to a heavy industrial use. It creates quite a bit of noise, as we're all familiar with. So, that, that, in my mind, was one of the key factors in all of this, which is why it's master plan for industrial, as opposed to residential. So, if you have other questions, I can't, I can't address questions related to the information by the appraiser, obviously, but if you have questions about the rationale that either we or the planning commission used in evaluating the applicant's request. I know they have a number of representatives here, and they may want to, you may want to ask them questions, or they may want to present something to you, but if you have other questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Well, I think Fuller's report came to a dramatically different conclusion than what had been provided by Duke about the financial potential there. So, I'm looking forward to the Row Engineering aspect of it, simply to find out whether or not he sees the existing infrastructure being able to be the same level of financial support for that, that project. I'm hoping that there's some, some reflection of if that were reconfigured as well. The roadway was reconfigured, the financial implications of that aspect of it, too. If there were one big building, or a couple of large buildings, as opposed to smaller units, where, you know, maybe it's a road that just goes to one side or the other, and, you know, where there are two independent things that occupy the entire property, so.
John, question. So, when the property was bought, what was its own?
That's before, long before my time. I think it-
It came in as industrial.
I think it was residential. I've heard that it was residential, and the owner of the property asked it to be rezoned to industrial.
Okay, so, so right now, it's industrial, and it's been that way for a long time.
The nine days?
Since night, since 89.
Okay, you have a tube mill. It backs up to a tube mill. So, it's, it's pretty much industrial, and there's not very much, I don't mean to make light of this, but it's pretty clear that it's industrial. Master plan calls for industrial, and the planning commission recommends that we don't rezonate. So, to me, this, this doesn't have to be overcomplicated. I mean, I guess you can make an argument for financial sense, and does it make financial sense for the city and bringing more money into the coffers, but sometimes there's a price tag that goes along with cost of living. I mean, what I mean by that is, I like to look at a regional approach sometime, and one of the biggest criticisms, and not to pick on line township, is that hearing that they don't stick to their master plan. Now, for whatever reason, that's debatable, but you see all the rezoning, and the infrastructure is not upgraded to the rate of what the rezoning is, and the residential is. So, there's a lot of people that say, "Hey, slow down to growth. Our roads cannot handle it." Everybody in here has been down Pontiac Trail and sat there for 20 minutes to go two miles. I mean, there's, you look at Eight Mile and Griswold, and all down Eight Mile, there's gonna be, what did I hear? Don't quote me on the number, but something like 1,000 new homes. Milford Road is gonna, I heard a rumor Coyote Golf Club is up for sale. I mean, this, this is a different area, I understand that, but the point I'm making is, we have a traffic problem, we have an infrastructure problem, not just, not really in the city of South Line. We didn't, because we're landlocked, but in general, our regional area is really under duress. So, and so, for me, quality of living is not, if it's zone industrial, you got a tube mill in your backyard, the quality of living, and quality of life is not worth rezoning this for a few bucks. That's my position. Mary?
I appreciate the outlook that the planning commission has taken as well. However, I think we would be amiss if we didn't hear representatives from the other side speak as well, especially because if you came out here, you should, I want to hear what you have to say as well before I make any decisions. So, I'd like to weigh both sides.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one more thing, too. Even when, at least from our perspective, it's clear that you don't meet the master plan, one of the things that we also look to do, and as we all deal with planning and zoning, is we always look to balance not only the property owner rights with, well, the public interest, but also property owner rights. And in, in doing that, and being fair, we always look to gather as much additional information as possible to make sure that we are looking at every possible issue that's being raised by the applicant or anyone else. And I think, and that's why when we talk about the appraisal and looking at the layout, we want to be, we want to be fair to everybody, including the public interest, and we're, we want to make sure we haven't left any stones unturned, so to speak. And so, when that decision ultimately is made, even though at this point it may seem, you know, absolutely clear, there's other information out there that, I don't know, could potentially, could potentially change your opinion, it could direct you towards alternate uses other than residential. I don't know. And I think that's why it's good to, when there is additional information out there, to look at it. It's a good idea to look at it and evaluate it as part of your deliberation.
I think that's the only way to do it. I think, looking at both sides. But I do have another question for you before you go. So, Row is, who are you, who are you waiting upon for the next report, correct?
Yes.
And I'm sorry if I missed this, but when is it coming out, that report?
We, we're supposed to have a draft within, like, the next- We, we're supposed to have a draft within like the next week.
Okay.
And then, we need time to look at it and give them some feedback, because they don't, they don't know the site obviously as well as we do, so if there's anything that, oh, you didn't know about this easement, or something like that, so we have an opportunity to look at it at the staff level and give them some feedback on it before they issue their final, the final layout to us.
When do you anticipate it'll be, before council?
I had indicated to city manager that I highly doubt it would be ready for the next meeting. I think we'd be looking for the meeting after that.
August.
Just, once again, we want to make sure we're doing it right, we're looking at all the information properly, I don't want to rush it to get it quicker when maybe a couple of extra weeks would help us do a better job of-
Absolutely.
-evaluating what information, because we're probably gonna have questions, I'm sure, when we get the first cut at the plan.
So, all the recommendations that we're getting from everybody is not to approve it, to make the change. A lot of, it took a long time to get that master plan approved. Took a very, very long time. And the first goal, to all of a sudden turn around and flip it upside down, seems like then that paper doesn't mean anything. On the other side of the coin, I, I'm in the real estate industry, I've designed manufacturing plans for over twenty-five years, I'm very cognizant of their situation and what they're trying to, to accomplish here. I would like to see the other information that we will, that we could be provided, so we could make a much better decision based on that. But I also would like to hear maybe some from the applicant on their behalf. Thanks, John.
Mike, didn't you have something?
Yeah, I just, what was the, when the road was put in and the utilities were established back when they put it in, what was the general concept for the layout of that road? I mean, it's a U-shaped road, what was the idea? Was there an idea that was presented back then, as to what would be located at that site?
There was. This property was rezoned in eighty-nine. Final site plan of the industrial sites were completed in May of nineteen ninety-nine. I don't have them with me, but I can provide you copy, you know, have you come in and look at them, or meet you on a weekend, because they're obviously full size. We got this-
Individual units?
There were individual parcels that go around the U shape, as well as, I believe, a couple in the interior of the property, along with the retention pond and some of the utility work.
So, the plan was not to have just one building, was to have multiple buildings-
Multiple parcels, yeah.
Parcels along the U.
Correct.
Two, okay. Any idea what type of building we were doing originally?
Megan has been doing most of the work on this.
Oh, I understand. I mean, I was just curious what they were planning to put on the individual parcels. Storage?
It was an industrial sub.
Just, okay, various, okay.
Been marketed since two thousand and one, without one single lot sold. So, we can, we can, we have lots to talk about, but I don't finish this.
I just wanted to say that there's also the consideration that we're primarily a, like, home industry. I mean, from one side of the city to the other, we've got primarily, it's a residential scenario. This gives us a little bit more diversity, and, and it's helpful to understand that industrial locations are very low service-driven areas for the city. So, we provide water utilities, sewer utilities, but save for that, there, you know, it's not like a residential where we're plowing their streets and all the amenities that we offer typical residents. So, that's, that's a nice offset to not have an awful lot of costs associated with trying to maintain those locations as well.
Thank you, Carmine.
You're welcome. Any other? Okay. So, thanks, Carmen. I'd like to hear something.
Can you go to the mic, please?
Richard Linnell, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mark O'Rourke. I think based on what's been said, there are things, pieces of information that would be helpful to everyone, including us. We recently received the appraisal and have been looking at it, have not had a chance to speak to our own consultants. So, I certainly wouldn't want to dodge any questions if they exist, but I don't think this is an issue that's been fully flushed out, and I think there's a lot more that we could possibly do to assist in the evaluation process, but in concert with some of the efforts that the city has taken upon themselves. But with that said, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, a representative of the owner of the property, Mr. Mark Zerlag, is here. I'd let him speak for himself, but I, we've had a chance to speak prior to the meeting and a little bit during the meeting, and certainly would like the ability to address some of the issues that have been raised and speak to our own consultants. But if there are specific questions, I'm, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
My name is Mark O'Rourke. I'm, I'm the applicant. I, I represent myself and the sellers who are here with me tonight. I, I think it's important to give you a little bit more background, because this has been, we've been working on this thing for close to a year. We, we first approached planning commission probably nine months ago. First time I've heard anyone breathe anything to me that you're gonna hire your own engineer to reanalyze property you don't own, owned by someone who purchased it in the nineties, came before this city, asked for it to be rezoned from residential, so he could build her industrial subdivision, built it, designed it, marketed it unsuccessfully until now. Your, your community went, you know, out of their way to try to analyze what the right thing for, for the owner of this property to do would be, and except allowing to sell it. He's been, he's been trying to sell it for a million eight for years, losing money a bunch, and you have an appraisal that you hired that says it's worth seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, I don't know what you expect this whole exercise to show, but, you know, it's, it's amazing to me how, how, how this whole process goes. I think my, my engineer, Cliff Seaver, is here, can give you a little bit of information back, a little background, get you sort of up to speed on what the property looks like, why it is what it is, what we propose to do with it.
I, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Okay, great.
What kind of marketing have you done, other than put it for sale? I mean, how have you marketed in the last five years this site for industrial use?
That's a property, you know, we can invite the current owner here to kind of address the issue.
My name's Robert Matthews. I'm one of the owners with Pathway Builders. We've, we've had the property listed multiple times with different agencies, and, and we've listed it and, and marketed with, primarily with industrial firms, that's all they do is marketing for industrial. Every time that I market it, every time that, that they put it, everybody comes to me and tells me that needs to be rezoned, it needs to be residential. And I fought them every time. Every time, I'm like, no, this needs, we, it needs to be resident-
Sellers, scrubbing out, Thomas Dooley.
I mean, every, every time I list it-
Signature?
Signature. Every, every major industrial broker has had this thing, and no one could do anything with it.
Well, why the, but why did you ask the city back in eighty-nine to rezonate from residential to industrial?
We had a dream. We had a dream of, of building something and, and going forward with something. We both, both of us had something in our mind that we were gonna do, and things changed, you know, I mean-
No, I understand. I, it's just-
I mean, life, life throws curveballs, you know, I mean, things change. So, our dream changed, aged in, in life. So, our dreams changed. So, now, we're trying to market the property to, to do something and sell it, and now I can't find anybody to buy it, and nobody's out there to buy the property. And now, I can't market it, can't sell it, nobody bought. In fact, we offered it to the city. We offered it to you guys, and you know what the response was from you guys? You told us, no, it's a poor location. You, you, the city, you, the city, came back to us and told us, that's a poor location.
When was this?
That was specific to a, a particular site for a rec center, so it had to be central to the needs of everybody that was going to be a participant.
Excuse me, that was a perfect location.
Well, that, that wasn't what they decided, and the utilities to get into there were, were part of the problem, the cost to get utilities in there.
The utilities are in there.
He's already got them in there.
That's not what they had said.
No, the utilities-
Like was on the community.
Yeah, first of all, you didn't, you offered it to us at a price, number one, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And number two, the issue we were having with that site is that we couldn't put a rec center outside the loop. It would've had to been in the interior, and the size would be affected by the amount of usable space within the interior of the-
You guys never went any further, never talked any further.
Well, did we, right, did we go any further with it? It died.
I mean, that's just an example of exactly what the issue is with the site, so.
But, but the, the, the point is, is that the city came back and said that it was a poor location, and, and to tell me that it-
No, 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 no. I need to, I need to set the record straight on that. It wasn't a poor location based on the property itself, it was a poor location based on the other entities involved in the decision-making of whether that site would be agreeable to three communities. So, I just want to set the record straight on that one. We did not come back, and first of all, I was not representing the city.
I'll make a comment on that.
Sure.
I understand that three counties in South, uh-
Use the microphone.
I need a name, Mayor.
Three counties interested in-
And your name is?
Charles Smith.
Thanks.
And because Lion Township didn't want it there, they backed out. The city and Green Oak Township and Lion, they were, at one time, but Lion didn't want it in city, South Lyon.
Okay, so-
Well, that played a role in it, certainly.
Yeah, it did, because we were trying to get three communities to pay for it.
But-
We were trying to get three communities to pay for it.
I understand, yeah. But I just want to say, it wasn't the location, it was that, they just didn't want it, they wanted their own city, county. The, um-
Well, the particulars aren't really that, that important.
Well, they are important in the way it was couched to us, though, in his statement.
Important point is, is your question was, have you done anything to try to market the property?
That was the original question.
And they have turned it upside down to the point where they're trying to bring three separate communities to turn this thing into a rec center, because they can't find anything that works. So, nothing is working. So, maybe it was a bad idea to change, to change it to the light industrial zoning to begin with, and I think he's got years of proof and be the first one to say that it probably was. So, we're here to say-
Had a ton of money invested into something that hasn't worked.
Let's, let's take a different look at it than, than, than was taken in two thousand, you know, nineteen ninety-nine, and let's fix it, because you have something that's growing grass, that's producing no revenue, that's doing nothing positive for this community, and you're to sit up here for three hours complaining about spending money, and you need, this community needs to grow. Something positive needs to happen in this community.
What about the effect of putting a residential development right next to a wastewater treatment plant?
I just built three hundred thousand dollar houses at Woodland North. It's within the community. Hundred yards of wastewater treatment.
Got Greenwich Hills right across the street from it.
How you do with selling them?
Sold them all out in twenty-four months.
Just point of order. Lynn, just out of clarification, when, when we have these before us, typically, what's the, what's the procedure for approval from planning commission? Because if planning commission hasn't approved this, I'm a little confused why we're discussing this tonight.
The planning commission has recommended to the council a denial of the rezoning.
Okay, so they have not approved it?
They don't.
No, they, when it, when it came before the planning commission, their vote was a decision to deny the zoning as their recommendation to the council. The planning commission-
So, procedurally, though, typically-
Advisory.
Okay, that'll come, okay, but it still can come before us for a-
They, they can't make a final decision.
You have the vote, they have the advisory passing.
Now, I am aware of a, at least a contact with somebody that had suggested a hundred thousand square foot facility to be located there. I think that it might've been for R and D instead of light industrial. I don't know what the, if it had to go to a PUD zoning or something to be able to accomplish that, but someone has reached out, this is recently, to, to find out what industrial properties and specific to that property we had in our area. So, I don't know how often that happens, but I do, I have heard about that one that was recent. So, I don't know that it's all a complete lost cause.
I think you guys know, gentlemen, that he's referring to Mark's right next to you.
Oh. Sorry.
I might be able to kill-
Can you just wait a minute?
Certainly.
I, just a point of order. I have not ever met Rob Matthews or Chuck Smith before. However, I have been in an adversarial position against the two of you in Natchua Ridge Estates. It was the liens on the property, the pathway liens, that were released. I represented the homeowner association not too long ago, a couple of years ago. So, I want to put that on the record, and I don't know if, if being in an adversarial position rises to a conflict of interest, but I at least want to put it on the record, because I want to be as forthright as I can about any relationship I have with parties that come before me. So, I, my name is Kurtzweil, Margaret Kurtzweil, so I was the attorney that handled the pathway liens on those properties. Just wanted to disclose that.
Any heard feelings?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Zerlag. I'm with the Thomas Duke Company. I've been in commercial real estate for just under thirty years, specializing in land for development. To answer Ms. Councilman Kramer's question, we've been marketing the property for, about the last three years. We've started, in fact, every one of our marketing efforts have been to industrial developers, owners of industrial property, people throughout our database that we have of thirty, forty thousand people in southeastern Michigan, and it's all been for industrial. We do get inquiries. People respond to a marketing piece that we do. We get zero calls off the sign, but, but we were very aggressive in the marketing. We know that the path of least resistance for our clients is to find industrial user. Doesn't require zoning, follow the zoning ordinance, it's, it's certainly the easier way to go. In the last three years of our marketing, and we're probably the fourth or fifth broker in since two thousand and two, I believe, we have just had no one that has expressed any interest in developing for industrial use at this time. When we took on the marketing assignment three years ago, I thought, you know, my kind of promise, our firm's promise, was that we would uncover every stone. We look at industrial, we would look at office, we would look at high-tech or flex, try to think outside the box, and for a various number of reasons, that, again, we're happy to, to talk about, there has been zero interest. And while we would be happy to lend our support and review of this, of the report from the Fuller Appraisal firm, they're a very fine firm, what they have provided is, is, is theoretical. It's theoretical. It's, it's if this happened, it would be worth this, if this happened. The facts of the matter is, is that they have been, they, I mean, with no offense to my clients, they gambled and lost. They annexed the property into your wonderful city, they had a plan for industrial, they own another industrial park that worked very well at a different location, they put the money where their mouth was and put the road in to try to get some type of, you know, activity, to buy a piece, to buy it all. If we had a, you know, we, they had a single user, I know there was mention for a hundred thousand square foot user, we combined lots, we do whatever it takes to make that work. They gambled, they lost, and it's been almost twenty years now that they've been paying for that, for that mistake. So, again, we're here to try to help and figure out what is, you know, a win-win for the, for the city, win-win for property owner. The developer is, is anxious to spend money in this community, and we just have a, a big disagreement with the, the, the plan for that property. We respect the planning commission, but I, you know, they, having been involved in township and city government for quite some time, the planning commission, you know, number one rule, I think, is, is to look at the master plan. Didn't meet the master plan, so it made for a logical denial when it didn't meet their own master plan. So, I'm here to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
If you were involved in this project for three years, why, did you have any input into the whole master plan process, how about, you know, rezoning that property before we approved the master plan?
approved the master plan?
No. Um, our goal was to try to find a use that met the master plan. And, um, it's, it's, it's only after, again, it's been three years, and we appreciate the fact that these gentlemen have kind of rode with us this long without producing any results. Um, it is only after not finding anybody that has had serious interest in investing their money, um, at that location, did we start to look at other use, at other uses.
You gave background on what hasn't happened. I thought when you got up, you were going to speak to the idea of the, the call that had come in for that hundred thousand R and D.
Yeah, I, it did. In fact, and again, forgive me, you have a, um, gentleman who is, um, in charge of economic development, and I, I forgot his name.
He's right here.
Okay. He's done a great job, by the way, of sending leads, not just on this property, but on others that we work in, in the area, uh, you know, to our firm. Um, he, if it's the same one we're referring to, he had, after the last meeting that we had many months ago, we met, he gave me the contact information, I followed through with it. They, um, liked what he had presented initially, but they too looked at it and, and thought from the location standpoint, they would not be competitive. So it didn't, so they, they passed on the property. But we did speak with him.
There is been litigation.
Um, Carmine, can I have you come back up, please? Carmine, it was the opinion of the planning commission that they have not met the specified requirements that the planning commission was looking for. Can you just briefly recap on what those requirements were and what, what was not met?
Oh, like compatibility with the master plan.
Mm-hmm, I have that.
You know, is a site capable of accommodating the uses?
And the tube mill.
Impact of, you know, being next to the tube mill.
Is that the only thing that's, is that the only thing that's not met?
Oh, there were, I think the ones that I outlined were the ones, there were like, what I think, like five.
I only have, um, not compatible with the tube mill and also the master plan. That's what I have.
Um, and the need to retain the amount, we don't have a lot of industrially zoned land in the community, um, and trying to get a, a good mix of land uses throughout the community.
Okay.
Um, that was another one. Uh, another was the applicant didn't provide sufficient evidence that the property cannot be used for any of the permitted uses or the special land uses in that district.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, my question to that is, we're hearing a lot of it now, so was that information provided to you in some kind of documentation prior to this? I mean.
I.
The city manager.
Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's two questions? So, do you want them to answer mine first or should they answer yours?
No, yours. I just, sorry, I didn't mean to step in.
Um, Carmine had just outlined the question. Do you have an answer to that? Is my proposal question, I should say?
Yeah, my, my name is Mark Schaefer, and I'm the one who drafted the letter regarding the valuation of the property. I think it was back in September, October, I'm not, I'm not quite sure when it was dated. I'm sure someone, someone has it. Um, and I attended a couple of the meetings with the planning commission that led up to the denial. And, um, I, do you have the, the meeting minutes from the planning commission meeting?
They do not.
They don't?
No.
When we're looking for information to create, um, kind of a good history of the background of how they got to that point of making that decision, I think that those meeting minutes might be helpful. I, I haven't read them, but there was a, a great deal of discussion that dealt with the functionality of the property and the surrounding infrastructure as to the reasons why this development was not well suited for an industrial development. One of the big issues that came up was trucking. Now, that's very integral with the, the development of, of, of functionality of any industrial development. And the, the fact that it's, it's not only a unimproved road, but it's also not an all-weather road. Um, there's weight limitations that are, that have to be put on it, that the tube mill kind of gets around because they bond over it, but that's specific to their use. So.
Which road surface? Dixboro, or are you talking?
Yeah, Dixboro.
Dixboro.
Dixboro. So, and I, and actually, I looked at the truckers map for Oakland County. I don't think 10 Mile, I think 10 Mile is subject to load limitations as well. Um, but, um, so, so that, that was a concern. The, the distance from the expressway for getting trucks on and off the road, you know, it funnels everything right through the four corners also, and right in downtown.
Yeah.
So, there was, that kind of is an understanding, not only from a monetary, um, point where you have people spending a lot of time in transportation vehicles, but also in terms of traffic flow. It not only will, would bog down the already congested downtown area, but it would force heavy trucks and also trucks that were subject to the load limitations to have to go through the downtown area. Um, and, and that's why I was hoping you had, maybe had those, those minutes, because there was a lot of consent and a lot of empathy, I'll say, and sympathy from people on the planning commission that understood the pitfalls and problems with this project. If, if that property were not zoned, uh, I'm sorry, master planned for industrial, I, the general sentiment, I think, would have been very different coming out of the planning commission. So, the, this is not necess, it's, it's, it's cut and dried from what Mark said theoretically. Everyone has their good practices. What, what I, what I questioned was, was when the master plan was being looked at, it was very late in the game, but there was a, uh, an awareness was made that we, that we wanted to redevelop the site. And that's what it is, is not developed, but is redeveloped, because it already has the utilities, it already has the site condo documents done, the roads are in. It has been developed, and it's been developed in a condition that should have been saleable for a long period of time. And just so we can monetize this a little bit, I had asked the question at the planning commission meeting, but how much hard cash had you invested in the development of that site, not including the land costs? Yeah, I thought it was closer to a million, but I don't want to. Seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so, you know, we, we tried to look for the highest and best use of the, the value of the land. And obviously, that has to coincide with the, the, the community, what's, and what's best for the community. And, um, the, the problem is, is that, you know, your appraisal shows that it's worth what they put into it 20 years ago, not including the land value that they, they, as far as their acquisition costs. And what that is telling me is that the industrial use is not the highest and best use. They have a, they have a developer who's willing to pay them a market value for the property in a form other than industrial use, despite the fact that it's next to the tube mill, despite the fact that it's next to the treatment center, despite the fact that it's on the dirt road. All those factors being, uh, being set aside, the value of the development as a residential, um, subdivision, if you will, is, is higher than the, the industrial land and its, the way it's seeded today. And after, after 20 years of trying to resolve their, their, correct their mistakes, they're looking for this exit. And that's what, that's what they're trying to accomplish. So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't do a very good job of meeting.
No, 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 at, the contrary. I was just going to say, Mr. Schaefer, that I, that is exactly what I was looking for. I wanted to hear you flesh out exactly precisely what it is, that, the evidence that you had. That's what I wanted to hear, that you brought forth to the planning commission. With that being said, though, I personally, from my perspective, what I hear in the community is that we're growing too fast. We have too many residential areas and that the roads are already congested. Going down 10 miles already a mess. So, the trucking issue is understandable, I completely get that. But if you were to put a multi-residential unit there, you would still have the same problem. You would still have, um, traffic as an issue, just because our infrastructure is weak as it is right now. But having multiple, um, having another residential unit put there, I think, would be unwise, just from my perspective, being as, from what I'm hearing from the community, from what I'm seeing in the community, we already have quite a bit. So, I understand both sides of it. I see your side of it as well. And I'm not a total no on this. I just, like I said, I wanted to hear both sides, and I appreciate you fleshing it out. That's exactly what I wanted you to do. Um, tax-wise, it would be helpful to have more taxes come if we had nice residential units put in.
Well, and I want to go back to the inventory, the idea that you need to have the inventory land for industrial, because this is one of the, the small undeveloped areas of that zoning that's left in the community. And there's, there's a reason why this is the remaining undeveloped industrial property in, in South Lyon, is, is because nobody wants to be there. Quite simply. It's, it's remote, it's hard to get to, trucking problems.
The trucking problems. This isn't, this is zone light industrial, right?
Correct.
I mean, what type of, um, facility could you put on this parcel? I, I know it's, it's broken up into multiple lots on the outer ring. How many lots are in the middle? Two?
I think it was three, but, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, this heavy trucking or trucking, what type of, um, facility would you even consider building here that would use heavy trucking or, you know, 18-wheelers and a continuous, continuous business?
You're exactly right. There, none.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
You, you're right, because, because no one will go there. What you're going to end up with, and then, and I.
Close to my whole issue about the truck, um, the trucks on the roads. Yeah, weight restrictions.
Oh, well. Yeah, well, that does come into play, because I think what you're going to, you're going to get is landscaping contractors, you're going to get, uh, s- small buildings that have a lot of outside storage requirements, that, because those are the, those are the ones that tend to locate in those types of areas. And in, and in the report that I had sent over, I referenced Fike Drive in Milford, um, and how that development had worked out, which is, is off of Child's Lake Road, and it's in the, and it's a little more remote portion of Milford Township, that has larger, similar-sized parcels that are zoned that allow for outside storage. And there, there are smaller buildings with trucks that are making frequent trips in and out, but they are, um, you, you're right, they're not going to, you're not going to get a coil-slitting plant. The only reason the tube mill is there is because of the railroad, and the railroad's gone. So, you, you're absolutely right.
Now, you have to take into consideration, when this was initially approved to be industrial, the circumstances of 18-wheelers would have still had the same hardship on that dirt road, on the, the roads in town. All of those con- constrictions would have still existed, so.
It was a mistake then, it wasn't a mistake now.
Well, and that's my, it's part of my problem. And, and you also had made the, the reference of highest and best use. That's not our obligation to make sure that you're enriched to the best amount that you can be.
No, we're in it together.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, that's, this has got to be a deal. Now, my other concern is, and, and I'm not trying to end up making any judgments on that, on anybody's, uh, prior action, but to configure the thing and put the restrictions of having a road that doesn't look as though it's necessarily the best way to facilitate somebody taking advantage of that property.
If, if you get off of Kensington Road and exit 151 off 96 and go south, south of Silver Lake Road, there's Kensington Pines Industrial Park.
Mm-hmm.
Kensington Pines Industrial Park has a, a loop road called Lachlan that loops around. Um, that was developed about the same time. Um, the land originally started selling in there at about 27.5 an acre. Um, the company that I was working for at the time purchased property in that park up to about 80,000 an acre, and it's, it's fully developed.
Mm-hmm.
The difference is.
At access, yeah.
An exit right there.
You have an exit right there.
Yeah. And it doesn't have utilities.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
How important is that? You, it, the, the, the configuration of the road, the fact that it has water and sewer, that's not the issue. The issue is the location. The location can't be changed. Location is wrong.
Is Rushton a Class A road?
It is not.
Now that it's repaved? No?
No, it's not an all, I, it's not an all-weather road.
No, it's paved now.
I, I'm confusing terminology, and I apologize. All-weather road is a, is a, is a designation.
That can take that load?
Designation that's given to by the, the county road commission that allows it for travel, uh, throughout all seasons without restrictions.
Yeah, okay. All right, weight restrictions. All right, yeah.
So, I have a, I have a friend that, um, is kind of relevant to this a little bit, and it's, you'll see where I'm going. Um, it's a local community not too far from here from South Lyon, I'm not going to mention. He moved from Wicksum to this, to this other, uh, location. In that location, there's a lot of residential. He's kind of in there wedged in, which I was surprised that he was in there. A lot of big trucks do go in and out of there. It's, he doesn't manufacture anything, but he does some heavy, does some pretty heavy stuff. Um, in that particular case, even though he's a friend of mine and I see what's going on there, and, and it's working for the community, it seems like it's not a very good choice. Um, but it's there. And it was kind of the same deal, I went down here, it sounds like, that we had things zoned a certain way, we were approached, rezoned it. They developed it. And in my mind, it doesn't work real well, you know, but that was the zoning, the zoning was done that way. Um, I see the aftermath. So, I'm very cognizant of the ideas that, will it develop, will it not? I don't know. I mean, it is a pretty, it's a pretty tough spot, is where it sits, getting there. I already have a big problem with trucks downtown as it is, as Joe knows and everybody. I've been pushing on this before I ran for mayor, to get trucks out of the downtown. And, uh, because they don't have the turning radiuses, radiuses anywhere. The tube mill really doesn't either, for that matter, you know. And, uh, like you said, the trains were there before, and that was part of the reason why they're there. They probably would have never been there.
That's correct.
Um, but, getting back to, it was approached to us and it was rezoned years ago to go a certain way, my concern is, is that it doesn't meet the master plan, which is, bear with me, the information needs to be provided to the advisory committee as the planning commission, our planner, to us, so then we can make the value decision based on what we're seeing, not comments, because we're not privy to all of this 24/7, like you guys are. You know, we're not in the middle of it. So, I'm, I'm not trying to sway you the one way or another, I'm trying to understand better.
Why was the master plan updated?
We had to.
Because we're required by law.
Yeah, right.
Every five years.
Why does the law require it?
For changes, yeah. That's my whole point, in that if this, if you were there for three years involved in this project.
Well.
And when the master plan was being, you know, redone and revamped, and we heard nothing about it during that three, three-year process that Duke was involved trying to sell this property, and now you come to us after we have approved the master plan, that's.
Were we, were you, were you contacted prior to the master plan being completed regarding this property by us?
Actually, yes. The reason, the initial rezoning was filed in early, let me pull up the email again, was filed in early 2016. The master plan was not adopted by the council until November of 16.
That's correct.
So, why are we just hearing about this?
So, we can take it up five years now.
Carmen.
Yeah.
They were in the process of, we had already gone through the review process of planning commission, and they were in the final stages of recommending it to you for approval when this came up. And they did not want to hold up getting it adopted. They recommended that the applicant come back to them with a master plan amendment, which they chose not to do. They went straight for the rezoning. And, um, another point, in really, you know, what it comes down to, in terms of looking at the uses, the, you know, maybe it's true that the large trucks can't access this, but the one question they didn't answer, which I asked early on, was what about, um, and if you look at the ordinance, business centers combining small-scale office and industrial space. They're highly successful in other locations. They draw more from a local population than they do, than do the bigger industries. And that question was never answered, which is one of the primary reasons we have Row looking at that now, so we can get the answer to that question. Maybe it won't work, maybe it will, but nobody's answered that question. And our job, when we look at changing what's already in place, is we need to have complete answers to all the questions, not just the ones that are chosen by a particular applicant because they have a specific project. We have a duty and responsibility on the public side of things to look at all of the uses in here and all of the possibilities. I did not see anything in there that conclusively said, look, we did a layout here, we've looked at the square footage, we looked at how many units we could get in here, what the per-square-foot cost of development was, and it's not financially feasible. Here it is. We didn't have that. Okay? So, we're generating some of that information on our own to be fair to the applicant. Uh, but we didn't have that. We can only evaluate, when we make a recommendation, we can only evaluate what's presented to us by the applicant. So, there, there are still lingering questions about some of the uses here in that district. Um, no, maybe you can't draw from I-96, but what's to say we can't draw from the community? I know other centers like that in other communities, they have dance studios in there, they do have landscaping buildings, they, landscaping operations, they might have startup companies. Um, there's a wide variety of different uses that are more locally based that could utilize space like that. And I know Bob gets calls all the time for uses like that. I'm not saying that this is automatically viable. What I'm saying is, we are doing our homework to answer that question, okay? To be fair to the applicant, and also to do our, you know, our responsibility to meet that, to look at, are we being fair to the applicant?
I, I would prefer that you ask them to provide that information rather than us paying for it. I mean, they're the ones that are applying for the change of, of zoning. I don't like us paying for their research, so.
How much does this cost us, by the way?
Total. Um, that's getting into another.
Well, there was, there was. Well, there was, there was an appraisal done by Duke that, for us to get the one by Fuller, I thought made good sense to validate, or at least have an arg- a competitive argument.
Mr. Mayor, we did make it clear that we, when we look at this, we look at all the uses that are permitted, or by either, either permitted or by special needs. And when we don't get information for all of the uses, that's what the recommendation was based on. Since, since that time, we're just answering other questions that have come up.
If we have another report coming that, as you say, is, is, uh, gonna try to see both sides of the issue, isn't this whole matter premature to be before us tonight?
Uh, in my opinion, um, because we do have this other information coming, I would say it'd be worth, my recommendation would be at this point to table it until we get that information and can evaluate it, and see whether there's a reason to, you know, change the original recommendation. Once again, that recommendation was just based on the information we had at that time in hand.
And, and with this additional information, when it comes in, will the Planning Commission take that into account, uh, in terms of their current recommendation or denial? Will, will they relook at their, uh, position on that?
I, I think, and it's, I think that goes to Tim, but that's more procedural. I think, um, you always have the right to remand it back to the Planning Commission, yes. Depending on what the, you may look at it and say, "We feel that the original recommendation of the Planning Commission was correct, and the information we've gotten doesn't change that opinion." Or you may look at it and say, "We'd like them to, to take a look at it and reconsider it." That's always an option that you have.
With that, with that in mind, I would move that we postpone them there to the first meeting in September. Would that provide enough time to get that report and have everyone who needs to see it?
The report's coming in August, you said?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's up to you when you wanna see this again. Uh, we, it's a guess as to when we'll have everything in order. It could be sooner than that, it could be that time, I don't know that it'd be later than that.
I'm trying to pick a date that won't require us to, to re, repostone.
In other words, he's saying, if we're going to have the report in August, setting the date to reconsider this as the first meeting in September would be reasonable. That's what he's asking.
Yeah, that, yes, that would be reasonable.
Alright, that's my motion.
Yes.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Maggie.
Um, is it Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Uh, have you read the Fuller appraisal?
I skimmed it. I have not read it, I've not read it thoroughly.
No, a motion to postpone is not equitable.
Um, it's a snapshot in time, um, given an evaluation based on December of last year, which was, I was, was to kind of rebut or provide additional information based on the research that I did. The comments that they made regarding the Doane property as the comparable property, um, I'm not so sure that they understood exactly where I was headed with, where I, where I was going with it, but the, the excess land and the outside storage is why that property is, is intrinsically valuable, in my opinion. It wasn't necessarily excess land that could have additional square footage added to it, and therefore was like, uh, uh, an asset held in reserve. So, um, you know, it's, it's a, uh, I, I thought it was, I thought their, their math was accurate. I mean, I thought it was fair. Um, I didn't see anything that was, that was terribly go, you know, that I would, that I would object to terribly.
I was looking in here, I'm trying to find it, I recall looking at the net operating income that they were, somebody was calculating, I thought it was in the Fuller appraisal. Uh, they were calculating, uh, net operating income, and then looking at debt ratios with the bank. Does that ring a bell?
It, it does a little bit.
Yeah, that's in the Fuller.
Yeah, yeah, that gets a little bit to the theoretical part that, that Mark was referring to, and against the value of the appraisal, but, I mean, I can, I can try to-
But do you think they were off in their assumptions for, for net operating income? Because they were making some adjustments to that income based on the ability to rent, you know, what your square-footage rental would be, and your payback, et cetera, et cetera. So, are you disputing any of their numbers in that at all?
Um-
Just curious.
I'll tell you in September.
Don't you have a rough feeling for what you think the net operating income is gonna be?
Oh, oh, I have more than a rough feeling. I, I think I generated my own report that that responded to it. I don't have it in front of me, but I, I went through a, a detailed kind of analysis of what I thought a finished building in the industrial park at Dixborough and Ten Mile Road would have to rent for in order for it to be financially viable, and it didn't work.
Well, are you familiar with Den- obviously Dennis Dubac? Are you familiar with Dennis Dubac?
I'm not.
Because Denny has his industrial park, he has every one of those rented. He then bought, bought the Quonzo Hunts over on Rushton, and he, and he has those all rented out. So, he's got exactly what you are looking at maybe doing with an industrial park. He's been very successful.
He built those buildings?
The, the closets were there. He went in-
That's right.
He went in, rehabbed them, and he has marketed those, and they are filled, they're rented. But he also has an industrial park on Ten Mile, on the corner of-
The Beavers built that.
On, on Ten Mile and Rushton. It is filled. His law has- Pardon? But your infrastructure's already in.
But there's the legacy, there's the legacy-
I, I understand, but, but his is-
GM was profitable after they went bankrupt, too, I mean, it's a-
Who?
GM.
Well, um, my next question is, um, why did the city order an appraisal on somebody else's property? I, that, I kinda-
That's not for me.
Mr. Mayor? It was, it was retained, we obtained this report to address the financial feasibility and, and expectation to have to defend the zoning. Uh, we received that financial, uh, analysis from Thomas Duke at the Planning Commission shortly before their meeting and recommendation. That would've been something that I would've liked to had go to the Planning Commission. And, uh, it's intended to help support the industrial zoning.
Who authorized it?
And does it support industrial zoning?
I think this is a unique piece of property.
Well-
It has, it has some characteristics to it that, that, uh, are challenging from, from a number of different uses, including industrial.
I, maybe I've read something wrong in here, but it appears that the Fuller appraisal, uh, somewhat supports a different use other than industrial. Am, am I reading this appraisal wrong?
Well, I certainly think that's one interpretation. One of the things when you were asking, uh, Mr. Schaefer about the NOI-
Yeah.
And the projections. One thing, and it's not clear to me, and I was out of town, so I, I haven't had a chance to speak to Mr. Fuller, because I'm not sure he'd really speak to me at, at this point until, before you. But there was a discussion about improving the road. So, he had some predications, but I'm not entirely clear whether his projections were predicated on the road being improved at four hundred and seventy-five thousand, which he did put in there, or his projections were without the road being improved. So, it's, it's hard for Mr. Schaefer, and, and more difficult for me to respond to your questions, and certainly not unwillingness, but we don't know exactly what Mr. Fuller, how he was directing. I can tell you that we want to do a feasibility study. Does this zoning have, is it feasible? Certainly on its face, there have to be a lot of questions. We're talking about almost two decades, nothing. No property owner would intentionally develop something with the idea that, "I'll just wait long enough and be stubborn enough so that I can ultimately turn it into a less intense use." I imagine most rezonings you see are somebody who wants to upzone to more intensive use. Here we have the opposite. There's somebody who wants to downzone their property, which inherently would make it less valuable, assuming that the existing zoning had value. And it's been spoken to by Mr. Schaefer, by Mr. Zurlag, by Mr. O'Rourke. That property, and, and most importantly, the owners, the property doesn't have values. They, they didn't say, "We turned down an offer." They said there were no offers.
The microphone.
True. They said there were no offers. And so, you, I certainly can see parts of the Fuller appraisal actually supporting our position, because even when he talks about the NOI that could be received on a hypothetical building, he talks about half a million dollars to improve the road.
Yeah, that's-
Mr. Schaefer's already talked about the challenges with the road, and I'm not a road expert, Mr. Schaefer certainly can speak to this more intelligently, but even improving the road doesn't mean you eliminate the truck issues. What you do is make it feasible that somebody might, might, I might, probably shouldn't even use that word, might actually want to build on one of those sites. But they still have the very same road issue that the Tube Company faces, and the issue that I assume other companies will face, because Lion Township and surrounding areas, they've had numerous light industrial, hundreds of thousands, these gentlemen can all attest to. Hundreds of thousands of square feet have gone up in, when this property was rezoned, when it was developed, when times were great, when times weren't so great. It's been happening all around this area, but it doesn't happen here. Well, these gentlemen who have spoken to you guys have advised you, they're not sitting on offers, not saying, "Well, that's too low." They have nothing. They don't have someone coming to them saying, "Hey, build a suspect building. Go to your bank, here's the debt service coverage, here's what we'll pay, here's what we need, truck bays, whatever it is." They don't have that. They don't even have the opportunity to do that. And certainly, if we were looking in a very small period of time, maybe the downturn, you might say, "Well, hey, everyone had problems. Nobody's house was worth what it was supposed to be, no building was worth what it was supposed to be." But we had good times. In fact, we had great times. I think these gentlemen would tell you that right now is one of those really good times. But certainly in the early two thousands, yet nobody comes. Nobody.
Well, here, I'm, I'm sort of conflicted, because, um, I'm trying to get my hands around the Fuller appraisal, because I'm not convinced that it supports, um, industrial use. Completely. I mean, I, that's why I asked you guys, am I, did I read something wrong in here? Or is that kind of the gist you're getting a little bit? Is that this appraisal did not completely, totally slam-dunk support industrial use? And the problem is, is the city ordered it.
Yeah, we've, we've seen it for as long as you have.
I mean, the city ordered it.
Yeah.
Well, it does say that it'll financially support-
It's an appraisal of the property as currently zoned I-1. We weren't gonna pull any punches. We didn't go get and tell Mr. Fuller to come up with a value. We asked him to give us his opinion of the property's value as zoned I-1. That's what he's done.
And that's the seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and eighty thousand?
Correct.
I believe it's seven forty, actually.
What is it?
Seven forty, I believe. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that's what-
And you're asking one, two, or something? One eight.
Well, the, the listing, but I, I would tell you, as, as, as an attorney that works in real estate, and they're brokers here, the idea that somebody would never make a run at a property, especially one that they'd been seen sitting for almost two decades, gone through four of the top brokers in our entire state of Michigan focused on industrial, so the idea that they would somehow, someone would be afraid, they wouldn't want to hurt her feelings, and say, "Well, I don't want an offer below a million, because it's a million-eight," I, I just don't think that rings.
Yeah, but, but, but here's the thing. If you put houses on there here, I, I, you obviously have an assumption that putting homes on this property are gonna sell, like they're selling in Lion Township. And I'm just not convinced that that is necessarily gonna be true. You are putting these up against highly industrial facilities. And if I were a young parent with kids, I would not want my kids listening to the clanging of that tube mill at three o'clock in the morning. I live, I don't know, two miles away. And in an August with a window open, three o'clock in the morning, my dogs are barking because they hear that pounding. So, I can only imagine what you're hearing if you are right up next to that, uh, those facilities. So, I'm saying, good luck selling a house at a half a million, like what they're doing in Lion Township, six hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. So, now we're looking at, so what kind of house are you gonna put there? What's your price point on the homes?
Well, just to be clear, it's a multifamily product.
Okay, so it's apartments, condos?
No, 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 no. It's a for-sale, multifamily kind of product. We have, uh- We have a rendering, actually.
And what's the price point? I, I'm just, I'm curious what the price point is.
Well, I don't think any price points have been set. Um, I think that approximately, the, the product would be in the high two hundreds to very low three hundreds.
What do homes sell for across the street?
Though, though, though-
That's in Green Oak Township in Livingston County, it's not comparable.
They, uh, those homes over there are in the four hundreds. But they're, but they're over, I, I believe that-
But they're right in the tube mill, though?
They're over three thousand square feet. They have lower taxes.
I just wondered about the proximity of the tube mill.
Okay, but they have lower taxes.
Alright, guys. We got a motion on the table, we have a support. You guys have done a good job stating your case. I think it's very evident, we need that extra information, uh, to postpone this until September. Um, and that way, everybody's getting their due diligence here. We're gonna be able to make the right decision based on the information we're gonna receive. We're not gonna settle this tonight, so, but-
How about trying to reach out to Mr. Fuller and see if you guys can come to some kind of an accord on what ultimately he decided was, um, the value of his appraisal?
Would you have to do that? Would you like us to do that in concert with anyone, whether it be your planner, or?
Gotta get near the microphone, so that, so that-
Would you like us to directly approach Mr. Fuller? Would you like us to do it in concert with your planner, or your counsel, or anyone?
Do you guys have any misgivings?
Um, I would prefer that any communications be done, at least through me, the city manager, as the city was the contracting agent.
Yeah, that seems reasonable to me.
We're, we're happy to abide by that, I just wanna make sure we follow whatever-
I'm not getting involved. Keep me out of the loop.
Alright.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a support. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Night.
Thank you.
Alright. Consider request by Councilwoman Kurtzwell of the council to suspend Councilman Kibble from his duties as council member for a period of thirty to sixty days related to the conflict of interest. Before we get started, I did contact Lynn to state my opinion, and I'm one of seven, I understand. Um, I originally supported the investigation in the very beginning, whole-handedly to alleviate getting to where we are right now. Um, I'm very disappointed in how everybody has responded and how everybody's acted. Um, I feel as though that the report was given, our own opinions are gonna stand on what we received. Um, I had conversation with the attorney a couple of times after the report, and looking at it myself till I blew in the face. Yes, there's things in there, but it's not clean. Was even told that, it wasn't totally clean. Then, we had an opportunity to censure, it went down. The council decided not to do it. Then, reluctantly, it was sent to the prosecutor's office on my end. I decided, I didn't think that was a good idea, but after thinking about it, it, it helped, because the prosecutor's office dropped it, stating there wasn't enough information to do anything with it. I know we're gonna get an argument from the attorneys here in a few, but in my opinion, we've wasted enough time, enough taxpayers' money, and it's time to move on. I'm willing to listen, but I'm quite frankly, had about enough of this, so.
Maggie?
You brought it up, let's go.
Okay, well, John, your comments were, um, expected. So, one of the things that, um, I wanna say is that these conflicts of interest with respect to elected officials, whether they're lawyers or business transactions like real estate, they really do need to be, um, disclosed and managed if the public is to have confidence in the decisional process. A failure to disclose a conflict of interest in the decisional process, as John would say, is sort of like a cancer in the locker room. Um, we all know the facts, and the issue really here tonight is about accountability, although I doubt whether there'll be any for Mr. Kibble tonight. My problem with this whole matter is that you basically have a seasonal elected official who clearly understood a conflict of interest, uh, matter when he was clearly railing against Ted Wallace and the ca- cable TV issue. But when it comes to his own conflict of interest matter, which was disclosed not by him, but by a whistleblower, uh, the rules have now begun to change, and the rationale for accountability has now begun to change. And, and there really is no remorse, but there is defiance. Um, almost as if Kibble knows that his friends on council are gonna do the right thing for him. Uh, this matter is back before council because of several reasons. The first is, is the investigator- The first is, is the investigative report from Dykema Gossett is a solid and excellent piece of legal analysis. Contrary to what John Galis believes, is that it wasn't clean, that just shows John Galis's refusal to accept what a very, very good lawyer has put in writing about his friend. The Dykema Gossett report is beginning to reach attorneys that do do municipal law, and it is becoming one of the standards in the industry as to how to analyze a conflict of interest. Dykema Gossett, when he did the report, he had no axe to grind, he had no hidden agenda, and he did his job as a professional. And in my opinion, his legal opinion stands with respect to determining liability in this particular matter. We decided to go forward with this matter to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office for further review because once again, the city attorney interjected his opinion and felt that the South Lyon Police Department had a conflict of interest in processing the investigation. Somehow, the city attorney doesn't believe that Kivell has a conflict of interest when he voted on contracts that benefited his employer, but he believed that the South Lyon Police Department obviously would have a conflict if they had carried on with the investigation. Again, agendas at their best. So everyone knows that the Oakland County Sheriff's Department would not issue a warrant for Kivell's arrest because the county does not enforce civil documents. What they do is they enforce criminal statutes. For example, the county would involve itself in enforcing, let's say, for example, domestic violence statutes. I don't know what people's experience on city council is with domestic violence, but those are criminal statutes that clearly the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office would get involved in. They do not get involved in enforcing the city of South Lyon's charter. We, at that time, if you go back to the April 10th meeting, we talked about hiring our own attorney to prosecute this matter, but I believe Chief Collins believed that that alternative would be too expensive, hiring another attorney. So it appears, quite frankly, that the Kivell matter, at least from reading the tea leaves, and I'm not that bad at reading tea leaves, is really not going to be held criminally responsible for his conduct. In other words, no one up here has the political desire or the will, as his friend John Galis said, you know, we need to get beyond this and move beyond it. We're not going to hold anybody accountable, we just need to get beyond it. So it kind of appears that we're sort of left with just deciding how we're going to handle it from a non-criminal standpoint. So the issue now becomes, is what duty did Kivell have to disclose that he had a conflict of interest, and how do you in fact, hold him accountable? Well, tonight, as you know, I actually disclosed what I thought could be a conflict of interest. What I did was, I erred on the side of caution and at least let all the parties know that I had some relationship, even though it was adversarial, with parties that were appearing before me. So I think that when you choose to voluntarily disclose a conflict of interest and you choose not to disclose your conflict of interest, I think you are not dealing with apples, you are not dealing with the same kind of conduct. I would like to note that Kivell even apologized at one point and believed that the better practice would have been for him to disclose his conflict of interest, but, you know, quite frankly, my personal opinion is, and it's only my personal opinion, that Mr. Kivell knew what he was doing, he just did not expect to get caught. So the real problem here, as I see it, is the cover-up. It's the knowing failure to disclose a material fact in awarding a city contract. Many people have expressed to me the length of time in which they would like to see Mr. Kivell suspended. They all have their opinion, and my particular opinion sort of sat back and took an average. So at least from the taxpayer's side, I would say that people are not expecting a 60-day suspension, and I don't think they're looking at a 15-day suspension. I think when you have an elected official who clearly, clearly had a conflict of interest, failed to disclose it, and would not have disclosed it if it had not come to light, apologized for the conduct later on, cost the city almost $38,000. At some point, some level of accountability needs to be held. So I am willing to listen to any number that council is willing to suggest. I will tell you that the public, I believe, is looking at around 30 to 45 days, maybe a little lower, maybe 25, but that is pretty much where the public is at. And I'm hearing from the public, not only in South Lyon, and some Green Oak in Lyon Township. So I think South Lyon is pretty much going to set the standard for why we sort of make jokes about South Lyon, because we're going to see whether or not people can do the right thing, when clearly, clearly, there's been a problem with how this conflict of interest was held. So those are my beginning comments, and I may have some more at the end.
Point of order, there is no motion before us. Is there a motion? Do you have a motion? Councilwoman?
I am willing to discuss it first, and then if I have a feel, then I'll make my motion.
Typically, a discussion follows a motion.
Well, this is South Lyon, so we do things differently. What's your opinion? You've got an opinion, Harvey?
John, may I speak? Are you still talking, Harvey?
No, I'm waiting for a motion.
Oh, okay then.
I'll discuss it if there's a motion. Proper motion.
Just hang tight, then.
Well, I know how you're going to vote, so, so why don't we just discuss it? The motion actually is going to be irrelevant, because I think the decisions are already made, as John has already said.
You've already made your speeches, you've already had your discussion, you've already got on the record for your friends, all you want to get, so make your motion.
Come on, Harvey. What's your opinion? You're not going to vote for it anyway.
There's nothing to vote on.
What's your opinion about suspension?
I will give my opinion when the motion and a second is properly made.
So we just have been sitting here for better half of, over three hours, and we talked about many things for many minutes, multiple minutes, and there wasn't so much animosity here. It wasn't, where's your motion? There's no problem talking about things and getting to the bottom of it. I mean, that's, so, all of a sudden, we get into controversial topic, and all of a sudden, there's parliamentary procedures that come out that, and that's a speech to the agenda. But I did have a few words proposed that I wanted to state, and I will kind of just go off my notes here. As you can see, there is a lot of friendships here that are, I think, clouding some judgment. So I'm trying to separate any friendships that are on this council and speak strictly to what we have in front of us. So to do that, I went to the city code, and I looked at section 2-75, and it states, "No councilman or other official or employee, whether paid or unpaid, shall engage in any business or transaction or shall have a financial or other personal interest." So the debate was, was there a financial interest? The Dykema Gossett report argued that in some instances there were, some instances there were not, but ultimately there was. Now, even if you take out the argument of, no, a financial interest did not exist, the city code still states personal interest. So personally, I believe if you work at a place and you get your employment based off of how much work you get, that is a financial interest. So to me, that's a no-brainer. I think the public actually realizes that and understands that, and that's kind of a universal truth, if you may, if you want to put it that way. Now, number five of the city code also says regarding contracts with the city. "Any councilman or other official or employee who has a substantial or controlling financial interest in any business, entity, transaction, or contract with the city shall make known to the proper authority such interest in any manner in which he may be called to act in his official capacity. He shall refrain from voting upon it or otherwise participating in the transaction or the making of such contract or sale." So it's pretty clear that, I mean, the city attorney, before he did his 180, made that clear, that argument clear to begin with. So I think that's another universal truth here. Now, section 2-78 regarding sanctions of the city code state, "Violations of any provisions of this code shall raise conscientious questions for the councilman or other official or employee concerned as to whether voluntary resignation or other action is indicated to promote the best interest of the city. Violation may constitute a cause for suspension, removal from office, or employment, or other disciplinary action." So I'm getting to the end here, and I'm going to make my closing arguments, but I think what we're going to see is, we're going to see two, we're going to see two opinions. I think that we're going to see the gamesmanship, where people say, we should do a censure, which in my opinion is meaningless and a joke, and just a slap on the wrist in order to protect friends, or as the code states, there's a possibility for a suspension. And again, I'm trying to take any personal opinion out of this, I'm going off of what's in front of us. And per the Dykema report, it says, "From a review of video auto recordings of various council meetings, it appears that Councilmember Kivell was well acquainted with the conflict of interest provisions in the code of ordinances and charter." So in conclusion, the charter and code is clear. I was also not impressed with the response, unapologetic response, almost kind of blaming council for looking at this investigation when it was council as a whole that decided to hire an outside firm because there was some bias. We did receive a letter from our city attorney from the, I'm sorry, from the Johnson-Rizzati Law Firm that said that there was wrongdoing, and then as soon as an apology was made, complete 180, and basically saying, washing hands clean, saying this was a done deal and taken care of. So that's why we had the, council agreed to hire an outside firm because of the bias internally. So that's what we need to step outside of, is those biases and those friendships, and go based off of what the city code states. In my opinion is, suspension is in order, because as I stated, I think, I think censure is pretty, pretty meaningless.
Joe, censure's off the table. That got voted down at the very first meeting. It failed on a 3-3 vote. It failed. It's not up for renegotiation, for reconsideration.
So with that being said, those are my comments tonight.
Yeah, Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court, I think this is pretty darn simple, and this is my take on it from the public standpoint. You all have children. You all teach them right and wrong. You teach them accountability. If they're in punishment, they're either grounded, standing in the corner if they're too young, or their iPhones or their iPods are taken away, or whatever punishment you feel is necessary to suit the problem. The problem is, is you had a public official, we voted you in to uphold the city charter and the city code. You leave your friendships at this door as soon as you enter this room as a council. John, I respectfully disagree with you. I respect anybody that's on this table, but you have a duty to uphold the city charter and the city code. You were elected to do that, when you were sworn in in an oath of office by the city clerk and the city treasurer. You need to remind yourself of that tonight. Think about it, you're an elected official. You are setting the standard tonight on public official corruption is not tolerated and will not be accepted. It's that simple. I don't have to say it any more clearer than that. You know that that attorney had no axe to grind, you know he was hired independently, he did a wonderful job, and he took his time doing it. Why don't you honor his service to this city by accepting a suspension of 60 days? Thank you, Maggie, for bringing it to the forefront.
Since we're all talking, I'm going to say something. I'm sorry. Setting the record straight, as some people say we don't do, I'm the one that actually contacted Lynn when all this came to the table, and I said I wanted to have an outside mediator or someone to get involved to take away what's happening right now, because I knew for sure this was going to happen based on the personalities that are sitting at this council table. I was in full support of hiring the attorney to do that. We made a decision that night to go with the Kima, which is fine, they're the most expensive, and they did a very good job. But in my conversations with the lawyer, in reading the report myself, our opinion was that first time we had an opportunity to do a censorship, this council voted it down, and they decided not to go that route. And we couldn't get anything straight between the group because there was too much arguing going on in grandstanding, where you talk about personal. I said a couple of weeks ago, you know, I got friends up here, maybe, I don't know, you know? I didn't get elected for that reason, that wasn't my decision why I ran for mayor. And I'm damn well questioning myself now, dealing with some of the people I'm having to deal with, because in 25, 30 years of business, I've never had to deal with people like you guys. This is like being a babysitter. The lawyer came in, made his decision, gave us the report, yes, no one's questioning how well it was written and how well the report was done, but the questions still stand, there's things in there that just aren't, you said, Joe, yes, no, yeah. That was the same thing I got from the attorney when I asked him.
I'm saying that's how people interpret it.
I've also said myself, looking at it many, many times, I'm not a lawyer, it's my opinion. We had an opportunity to censure him, I thought that might have been fine during that time, this council chose no. So then, that wasn't good enough. Let's try it again, let's take it to court one more time. So being attorneys, you don't get to do that all the time, but you're doing it in here. And we decided, let's go send it to the prosecutor's office. Well, you just stated that no prosecutor or nobody was ever going to convict them of a criminal, so why did you recommend sending it? Two of us stood up for this thing to stop, the rest sent it. I wasn't happy when I left that night, but I started thinking about it, and I thought it's the best thing that could happen. It did go to the prosecutor's office, now we're going to get someone that's going to really look at it based on whether they believe there's something there or not. They came back with a very specific answer and said, no, case is closed. So in my mind, case is closed. We had an opportunity to censure him, we didn't do it, the council said no. Maggie, you were censured early on when this council got started, and you're basically saying, it's a joke, it's obvious you're feeling that way, but it is a serious matter why those things are done. You're supposed to be censured in public when something doesn't go right. When Ted Wallace was the mayor, I may be wrong, for many, many years, he was running SLTV and no one said anything, and there's a lot of things that led up to the reason why the whole cable TV came up. We're not going to revisit all that because we all know what it is, and no one asked him to resign. They told him he couldn't have a conflict of interest based on a financial thing, a financial opportunity to make money. In that meeting that night, I remember him stating, I've lost money, I've put money into this thing. He's correct, but the statement was, he couldn't have a financial interest. But no one asked him to step down as mayor, no one asked him to resign, and no one asked him to suspend him. They asked him, you cannot run the program, you cannot run the TV anymore. That's what I remember. We're asking someone here to do something totally different, and in my mind, even though the report came back that way, friend or no friend, I feel as though everybody has stated their opinion on what it should be, and in my mind, I'm trying to balance it all out and be the words of wisdom here, instead of letting personal get in, and we talk about personal, letting personal get involved in all the decision-making that's been going on here, and it has been going on here for two years, two years. And I've sat here very quietly and been smacked by one particular person in taking it, because I'm bigger than you. I don't do that to people in public. And I don't understand your agenda, I never would, I never did. You've made statements to me before the meeting tonight, you don't know what you're talking about, so when you make those statements, you should be careful. And I said my piece.
Hi. Okay. So I just wanted to say that I feel as though this issue has passed. I was the one who originally came forward and said, I think we should censure, I think we should suspend. Yes, Councilman Kivell's behavior wasn't appropriate, there's no doubt about it. Every idea that I brought forth was shut down. I did not believe in pursuing Councilman Kivell criminally, because I don't feel that the extent of his actions was criminally based, and it's not. And that's exactly what the prosecutors, or the Oakland County Sheriff's Department came forth with. So we've spent $40,000, roughly $40,000 worth of taxpayer money. That's your facade grant right there. That could have been your facade grant, but we wasted that on a fruitless effort. And I voted for it too, so, I mean, I'm to blame just as much as anyone else up here on council, but we're moving on. There are many other things that are going on in South Lyon that need our focus, that need our attention, our budget, the downtown. This is old news, we are moving on. This is old news, we are moving forward. I believe that Councilman Kivell has been punished enough. His name has been in and out of the news, it's been all over the state of Michigan. For me personally, I don't think there's any coming back from that. Your reputation is everything, you build it every day and you break it down with one false move. And so for me, that is, that's punishment enough, that walks with you everywhere, sorry to say that, but it's true. And, that's something that you have to, that will never go away, it's gonna be on the internet forever, it's gonna be in the news, and at this point, I don't think there's any resources that the city can afford to spend pursuing Councilman Kivell, and I also don't think that there's any time that we can afford to spend going forward with this. A suspension is not in order. I did the research on what type of council members, what kind of type of actions warrant a suspension, and you would literally have to commit some type of embezzlement, some type of fraud. Everything that I came up with, and for instance, the city of Detroit, they had a councilman who was accused of inappropriate relations with a minor. That's the extent, those egregious issues, or those egregious crimes, are things that you would suspend for. Something along these lines is not at that level, so I don't think a suspension is warranted, and that's the grounds that I stand on. Now, I know there are two council members in particular who are gonna sit up here and cry, "Oh, he's your friend," but you have no leg to stand on simply because I don't know Councilman Kivell socially. I do not hang out with him, I'm not friends with Councilman Kivell, my relationship with Councilman Kivell is strictly professional, so you have no leg to stand on. And that goes for everybody up here. I don't know any of you outside of the manner that I know you as a council member or the mayor. So, I think it's, it's kind of a weak argument to say that your friends up here are going to protect you. I don't have any friends up here, I'm looking at it for what it is. The city code doesn't say, or the city charter doesn't state you have to suspend, it's based upon your decision as a council if we come to that. So I think Mr. Rizzi, or Councilman Rizzi, your interpretation saying that we have to suspend isn't something that, that's your decision, you're one of seven. That's not something that the charter specifically states, it's an option that's put out there, it's guidance. From my end, we've spent too much time, too many resources to pursue this any further, I think we should leave it behind, we should focus on the matters that really need our concern, the budget, the downtown, and everything else that encompasses the city. Thank you.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard at the beginning of the meeting, Councilmember Kivell gave you a recommendation on a professional service, I don't know what it was, drywall or something?
Yeah.
Okay, you said you don't talk to them outside of council, or something along those lines.
I'm sorry, where are we right now?
We sit right next to each other.
We sit right next to each other, here. Did I call him on the cellphone? Do I have your cellphone? Do I, did I call him and ask him?
Joe, you and me have worked out together, but I don't consider us to be really great friends, we just worked out in the gym together.
Okay.
Is that the same thing?
Have I seen you socially?
Should I not do that?
Do I grab a beer with you afterwards? No.
Well, I don't know the relationship, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know your relationship with Maggie. Are you two friends? I mean, let's define friendship, if we're gonna get into, oh, let's protect our friends.
I'm not gonna argue with you, Mary, you're not.
If you're going to make the argument, then you better have a leg to stand on.
Mary, you've lied before to the public, so I, I just.
Can you point it out, can you give me some foundation?
It's irrelevant to this question, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that to suspend Councilman Kivell from his duties as a council member for a period of 20 days commencing tomorrow, for 20 consecutive days thereafter.
Here's your motion, I mean, I know it's not gonna pass because we already know what's gonna happen, it's.
Our city manager wants to speak.
I have two questions related to a motion on the floor. The first, is it a paid or unpaid suspension?
It can be paid.
And is it an excused or unexcused suspension?
It'll be excused, it'll be excused because he's been suspended, that's the excuse.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Do we have a support?
Yeah, I'll second, but the discussion is, I know it's not gonna, this has already been arranged, I mean, this is, from the get-go, it's been.
Wow. You know what, you've been speaking out of year, I haven't said one, no, I haven't said one word tonight about this. And then, the stuff you say about how it's been arranged, how it's already been talked about, how it's already been voted on. Seriously? You brought the motion on Murphy, and thank you for bringing that.
Four years ago?
Yeah, and that was done by a straw vote, but it was four years ago, right? Water under the bridge, Joe, we forget about that.
Lynn's doing a great job, how do you feel?
But we're still paying the piper based on that.
No, 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 I'm talking about how it's been arranged, how it's all already been voted on, how it's gonna fail. You presume a lot.
Well, then let's take the vote.
Yeah, let's take the vote.
You presume a lot.
We have discussion.
No, it's discussion, I'd like to say my piece since I haven't really said anything.
You have a floor.
I voted for a censure. I'm the one that recommended Dykema. I'm the one that recommended that the Dykema report be attached in the minutes, so the public could see what we spent the money for. I voted to turn it over to the prosecutor's office. So don't tell me it's been arranged, don't tell me you presume that I'm gonna vote against it just because you think it's been arranged.
I wasn't talking to you, Mike, I was speaking in German.
No, you're talking to all of us, and I get a little upset when you make these presumptions. The reason I am not voting for this.
There you go.
Is because the damage has been done.
I respect your opinion, you're entitled, everybody's entitled to their opinion.
Seriously, the damage has been done. If you look at the Southland Herald webpage, you see Mr. Kivell's face the entire time you're on that webpage. That article does not go away. It's there. But we've had actions committed on this council, and if you want to bring up the straw vote, I'll be more than happy to bring up that straw vote. But there was no suspensions, there was no censures, there was a very ticked-off councilman that said a lot of things at that meeting about that straw vote, but nothing was done.
Looks like.
Nothing, no, I'm just saying, for example, nothing was done.
It worked for your last reelection too, so, I mean.
Joe, you are quick with the one-liners.
Yep.
You know, but you know what, listen to what you're saying.
I did.
Yeah, you took a straw vote behind the back of an open council meeting.
I did not do anything unsaid.
Sure, okay, right, it wasn't done. When Ted said I spoke to you, Aaron, and Bev.
I talked to a lot of council members.
It wasn't done.
And quite frankly, I think Lynn's doing a great job.
I'm not, I love how you tried to.
I know, deflect.
Bottom line is this, damage has been done, I voted to do everything that I thought that, make sure the prosecutor's office did it, that Dykema did the report, censure, I'm not gonna vote for a suspension.
Again, I respect your opinion.
I didn't think so.
Harvey.
Well, I'm glad you didn't think so. Thank you. Thank you. Now that a motion and second has been properly made, I will tell you that I've voted to send this to the investigation and to the prosecutor's office, because all of our votes before that were ties 3-3, and we weren't going nowhere. I thought if we did the investigation, if we sent it to law enforcement, we would get a once and for all answer to our question. If you didn't like the response you got, you shouldn't become, come back here and for a second bite of the apple, that's just wrong. I think you know that, but it's wrong. Thank you, that's my comments.
My response to that is, is that it's not wrong. It's, you're a generation, Waddell, where things were swept under the carpet, and.
Did you forget that, Mr. again?
You can call yourself whatever you want. You come from a generation where things were swept under the rug, and accountability for public officials pretty much did not exist in this town. And now things, you know, people are starting to be held accountable for what they did. You're talking about a conflict of interest that was not disclosed for almost four months, and it probably would not have been disclosed if the whistleblower, me, did not come forward and ask a simple question to the city attorney about this conflict of interest. So it's not like I went out looking for it, it was something, information that came to me after the general election, I don't know how long it had been sitting under my door, I can only tell you when I found the note, but that's how the information came. And so to sit here and say that enough is enough, and, oh, poor Glenn, because his picture's up there on the internet, well, you know what, then I guess you should have thought about whether or not you should have kept this a secret, or whether you should have just come forward voluntarily like I did tonight and just say, "You know, I got a question to ask. I had an adversarial relationship, I've never met these men, but I recognize their names." That's the way to do it. I just get a quick answer, Tim said, "No, it's okay," then, "Fine, I'm okay." So, why, why, why is the standard strict for Maggie? But, but anybody else up here, there's a very different standard. I mean, why? Why, I think, I think the people in the audience are gonna clearly understand why. And you can say whatever you want, but the voting pattern up here clearly shows who has friends, who are the enemies, who are the reformers, who are the people that are resisting change. Everybody sees it, but that's okay, we'll live with the decision of you guys, I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
You know, the voting patterns really will show that you need more friends.
I disagree. I had more votes when I got elected office, Harvey. We'll see how you do in the fall.
I called the question.
John, I have a quick comment to make in response to that. I think we are speaking to two very different crowds. The crowd that you're speaking to, if you're even speaking to a crowd, they, whatever they're coming up with and telling you they see as a suggestion for suspension is one thing. The crowd that I'm talking to doesn't think that Councilman Kivell needs to be suspended. In fact, they said that they saw the remorse that came through when he posted his apology on the internet for everyone to see. And I know Facebook is something that a lot of people don't have, but there's a majority of people who do have Facebook, they saw that. And another couple people that I spoke to said, "His name has been dragged through the mud, enough is enough. Stop focusing on this matter and focus on the things that actually need focus, such as the taxes that we just raised, such as the downtown." So, for people to come to me and say, "These are my concerns, not Glenn Kivell," then I need to pay attention to that. And I also wanted to say that I think that there is a divide on this council because there's clear bias, there's clear bias. Maggie, you have an agenda, you said it a few meetings ago, that Glenn Kivell was your nemesis. You verbatim said that.
For 10 years.
She called him a predator.
No, she said nemesis, you said nemesis.
And I also call him a predator.
Oh, whichever, I'm sorry, whatever you said.
He's been going after me for 10 years.
But see here, that's where I'm, I'm trying to point out.
Well, I'm gonna defend myself.
No, and I, I understand that, and I see your perspective, and I understand where you're coming from, I'm just saying that there's, you can't see clearly when you have a bias. So that's another reason why.
I will always defend myself, always.
Nevermind.
Okay, let's do the roll call.
Can I have one more final, it's not a, okay. So, a couple people have asked this, and just recently, one gentleman said to me, he said, "You know, how is it that nobody knew where Glenn worked and didn't say anything?" And I kinda listened to the question, and I thought about it for a second, and I said, "Well, quite frankly, I don't know, because I don't speak to Mr. Kivell outside of council, I don't really have a reason to, I don't live down the street from him." But it made me think, I mean, and I'm not pointing anybody out, but there's, I mean, I don't know outside of council, maybe, I keep it strictly business council here because I'm here to represent the people, not be friends with people. So, John, you've been, you've known Glenn for 20 years, I don't know why he didn't say anything. Harvey, you've sat on council for 12 years with Glenn, I don't know why he didn't say anything.
He's a contractor, he's a builder, he works for a lot of different companies and a lot of different businesses.
I don't know why nobody came forward, so, that's a big question that's still out there, and the public doesn't, never receive the real answer, but to the public, when they wanna know, my answer is, I truly didn't know what he did for living.
Do you know who each one of us worked for?
I don't know who you worked for, John, I know, I have an idea where Mike works.
Idea?
Yeah, I don't know, Detroit, he talks about it.
It's because you choose not to talk to anyone, and having actual conversation outside of this council on a basis of being friendly is actually good. I mean, it actually works.
I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm not disagreeing.
When this council comes, this is not for this discussion, but when this council has made a decision, a couple, to basically abandon all conversation with each other and do it in public, it's created an adversarial situation between the group, as Mary says. There was a complete division, which existed when they fired David Murphy and Ted, the ex-mayor, did the straw vote and the whole thing, and Maggie, you said you, you ran on a, you know, a lot of conversation that you and me had before this election that I'm quite frankly very surprised, I'm sure you're surprised at me too, but, you know, history and history lessons and what people say do come back, and you've said plenty, and I remember them.
Well, that's okay, John.
It's my opinion.
When you lie to me.
Okay, fine, I'm a liar, we have a predator, we have a criminal.
I'll get to that, I'll get to that.
We have a motion?
Yep, we have a motion.
Support, let's do the roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor? No. No, Mayor, gay list.
No.
I'm sorry?
No, absolutely no.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisian? No. Oh, wait, yeah, no. It's late, guys, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kramer?
No.
No. Councilmember Modell?
No.
And Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Absolutely, yes.
No surprise.
Yeah, no surprise.
I'd like to make a statement now, that the endless toxicity is one of the biggest adversarial things that we're going to be facing in the next however long we're together. There's gotta be some way to, to try to not, there's been an endless campaign, both Joe and Maggie in particular have been campaigning from the time that you got on this board, and it's really divisive, because you spend so much time pointing at yourself of how important you are, that you lose the fact that we're here to try to actually work on the behalf of the people that live in this community. So, man, I hope that this being put to bed, we can finally start to try to work as a group in a constructive manner. And everyone has positive things to, to bring to the party, so.
Realigning, pivoting, I guess.
I'd like to respond to that, I believe I have an opportunity to respond to that since my name was mentioned. First of all, of course, I disagree with Mr. Kivell, he's a bitter man.
Of course you do.
And, and the reason I disagree with you is because you're not truthful to the public. When I came onto this council, there were violations of the Open Meetings Act.
That's wrong.
And quite frankly, you were a member, you voted on certain matters in which were violations of the Open Meetings Act.
That's absolutely false.
No, you, you are lying, Mr. Kivell.
No, that's absolutely false.
You also participated in violations of the charter when members of the Board of Review were not appointed in January, that's also a participation. You participated in another vote with respect to appointing an interim manager, which is outside of the city charter, that was a violation. So to sit here and tell me that things were fine is an absolute lie. This is probably the first time that the, the council is actually taking a look at the Open Meetings Act, complying with the Open Meetings Act, beginning to take a look at the charter.
We've always complied with the Open Meetings Act.
No, that would be an absolute lie, Mr. Kivell.
No, we've always complied.
No, Mr. Kivell, you lie. That is part of your problem, is that you are a deceitful liar.
No, your willingness to end up being attacked.
Additionally, Mr. Kivell, you need, Mr. Kivell, I gave you an opportunity to speak, now it's my turn.
No, but you're just endless for having.
And what's happening, Mr. Kivell, is when I came onto council, that the debt servicing bill was not adjusted appropriately, and now we find out that we have problems with the budget, and also when I was here, Mr. Kivell, you failed to take care of the downtown, which was an absolute dust bowl until maybe just this past year. So to sit here and say that you have been solving problems for the city, quite frankly, I've been cleaning up your mess, so thank you.
All right, we're done.
You didn't, Glenn, you didn't gavel Glenn, you know.
Let's go to the next one.
Mary's.
Get away from Mary to come back.
But John, why do you let him attack? I mean.
She said her piece, what are you talking about?
Then you gavel.
Because I'm done with it, Joe. We beat the dead horse to this.
But you only gavel.
Can I make a motion for a brief recess? I actually have to use the restroom.
Yes.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Roll call.
Okay.
Give us a time limit.
Harvey, did you second that?
I'm sorry?
Did you second that?
Yeah.
Yes.
You got a lot there?
Yeah.
I think you gotta make about six videos.
I told those guys not to do that.
My whole body fell asleep, so I had to get up.
I'm sleeping.
I know. I lost it the last, I was like, yes, no, I don't remember. It's.
I never understood that. They're playing right at every meeting. A percentage at every meeting.
Yes, sir.
Hey.
Okay, thanks.
My ass is asleep. I know. You know we're gonna have to.
Everybody, I'm sure thanks you. All right.
Discuss.
Call us back. Or back. Meter's back, meter. Meter's running. He's back in order. Discussion of policy issues for council adoption being researched by the city attorney.
This was a question that was asked that we discussed at this meeting, things that the city attorney and I are working on that are policy issues that'll be coming before the council. Primarily, those issues, very similar to the vacation policy, include making amendments to our existing personnel policy for several policies that we don't have, including seatbelt policies, tobacco use, and cell phone usage in city vehicles and equipment, updating other personnel policies, as well as reviewing the entire manual that has not been updated since 2002. City attorney can speak to other issues that we're working on as well.
I don't, I was a little confused about what this was about, but I, I don't have any specific policy type issues that I see. I do have some matters that are likely to come before council. And I think liquor control, I, I do think that the city wants, should consider putting one in place before you get a restaurant that comes in and tries to get your last license, so that you have procedures in place. The ASTI, the Arcadus Restrictive Covenant is gonna come back. I need to get back with ASTI and prepare revisions to the Restrictive Covenant and modify the proposed additional insurance letter that was provided on behalf of BP Amoco. And there are several other administrative type issues, but those are the primary issues at this point.
So Lynn, did you put this, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Lynn, did you add this to the agenda? I wasn't sure.
I was asked by the council at the last meeting to put it on the agenda, to discuss what policy type issues Tim and I were working on. Because the council is supposed to be a policy-setting organization and directing me to run the day-to-day operations.
Well, my only comment would be, you know, my big thing is staying underneath the retainer. You know, if we're gonna stay underneath the retainer and we're spending, I mean, we used to spend sixty-two fifty a month, now we're up to nine thousand. That was two years ago. As long as you're staying on the retainer, we're not getting, you know, milked here, taxpayers aren't getting milked, then I'm okay.
I object to the term milking the city through the city attorney's office. I object to that. That's offensive. You gotta realize that. That's extremely offensive.
It is.
This is my profession. This is my livelihood. I'm not milking anybody. I would appreciate if you would stop using that term.
I'm very calm here. You can calm down. It's okay.
I, I've taken this a long time. I find that term, in particular, very offensive, and I'm sorry if I have an outburst.
I'll get back to what I was saying. So, I'm not an attorney, so I don't, I don't know, you know, it doesn't offend me. So, I don't know how, that's okay. So anyhow, as long as we're staying underneath the, the retainer, you know, that's, that's my main concern. And then, but Lynn, I do think if there's gonna be some major policy issues, it probably should come before us, if, even if it's just a memo, but it should be pre-approved by you. You know, for example, the, just had the, what was it, that policy changed by changing the local, the bidding ordinance. Did that come from you? Did you initiate that, or who initiated that?
It's actually not a policy change. That is.
Potential, but the research.
Well, the research, Tim and I had talked about it because since I got here, I've been questioning the purchasing policy.
Okay, so you initiated that?
Yes.
And then you instructed Tim to?
To look into our purchasing policy and to see if we were following it to the letter of the city code or not, and if not, make recommendations.
Okay, 'cause at the last meeting, I recall, the question was, why was this being looked into? And the response was, I was asked, vice city attorney was, I was asked by a council member, and then you started looking into it. So that's my concern. So I just wanna make sure it's running through you first, but.
No, I, there was no council member direction on it. Lynn and I have been talking about the purchasing policy.
Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Well, as to the, I'm just gonna address the two that are before us. And the first one is the liquor control. I am a little bit surprised that the liquor control policy did not come up sooner when the gentleman stood here, what, about a year ago? And he was looking at putting in a bar and taking our last liquor license with respect to the corner deli. So I'm surprised that it's taken over a year for somebody to realize that we did not have a liquor license, but ordinance. But that's obviously something, I suppose, would be a priority in terms of legal work. The other one is, which, there are certain issues that I tend to stay on, and it's gonna be the Open Meetings Act, and it's gonna be the bidding. And I, I am concerned about adopting a policy that favors local vendors. My personal opinion is.
Not my issue.
It's, is a competitive bid is a competitive bid. And I think that in order to make sure we don't have issues in our closets that will come out at some point, I think it's best to have everything up on the table, and if the bidder wins and they're a local business, fine. If, we can solicit local businesses, but if they can't compete, then they can't compete. 'Cause that's the whole point of a competitive bid process. And I feel very uncomfortable giving anybody leverage in the bidding process, particularly when I'm using taxpayer money. Now, if, if I had a small business and, and rented and, and said, okay, I want everybody to buy their clinics and paper printer from the local stationery store, that would be one thing. But when I'm spending taxpayer dollars, I think I wanna keep it upfront as competitive and open as possible. So I'm not gonna support a policy unless other people here, you know, I'm only one vote, unless other people think differently.
I agree.
But that's, that's just how I feel on that. And Lynn, I wanna thank you for bringing this forward. This is, this was a good idea, to bring this forward so that we have an opportunity to flush out the policy issues, and then, if, if it's there, then go forward then with the legal drafting. I think that's a way of controlling legal fees and, and manage them. And I think you've done a good job on that, so. Thank you. Thanks. That's just makes your sense.
Yeah, I think that, you know, Mike, I heard you kinda agree with the bidder. I, I feel the same way. I mean, I don't care. I mean, in a perfect world, we're gonna always buy local. I get that. But if there's an instance where we can save money versus not save money, we gotta do what's best for the city and, and the taxpayer ultimately. And, and I'm sure they'll appreciate getting, getting the best deals and us being conscious of that. So, yeah, I mean, in no way am I gonna waive the local bids. I'm sorry, the competitive bids. I'm tongue-tied, it's getting late. The competitive bids for, under, really under any circumstances, unless it's demonstrated that there is no competitive advantage. And I'll come back to it again, you know, like I said about the fountain. I, I looked in, in five minutes, and I found over fifty companies that supplied the same parts. And just last council meeting, we voted to waive the competitive bid process. It's, that's the stuff that we need to change. And I think that's the stuff that some people don't wanna cover. So, thank you.
I, I would encourage everybody, 'cause I'm gonna stay on the bidding process. I would encourage everybody to take a look at the city of Plymouth Township. They, they were, I believe, audited. And you never know when we're, we're gonna be audited. It's not like we're in the best financial position. And I think that you have to prepare for a time in which maybe you will be audited. And it appears that auditors are definitely keen in on this bidding process. That's where your corruption is. That's where, that's where your conflicts of interest arise. That's where your corruption comes in. This, it's, it's in these, these public contracts. So, take a look at that and take a look at the city of Chicago Public Schools. It's bidding. It's the bidding process that's getting elected persons, whether it are in school boards or municipalities, in trouble. So I, I just don't wanna mess around with the formula. Give somebody an advantage. That's, that's just me.
Mr. Mayor? As to the purchasing policy, one of the questions, or there's a series of questions about whether the council would be willing to consider changes in the dollar thresholds for different types of bidding process, and also providing some discretion with, to the city manager to choose what type of bidding process is used, given different factors or criteria. For example, is there a threshold, just to pick a number, above ten thousand dollars where you do sealed bidding? And it's my experience with this community that the department heads don't use sealed bidding for much of anything. And that would have to be, that would have to change considerably if you wanna do that. There are some websites and services that can help with that, but it also requires, I'm seeing much more front-end determination of specs so that you can provide a bid, a bid request out that has definitive specs, and everybody is providing apples-to-apples submissions. So I, I think there's some practice and some maybe tweaks to the, to the ordinance that allow different thresholds and discretion and methods for bidding that might serve the city better. That's really where that issue is at.
Yeah, but that's all stuff that Lynn can do. I mean, if not you, then, then somebody in the department. I mean, we, we did get you help. I'm not saying I want Bob to do that, or, you know, but it's, this is stuff we don't need to spend extra resources when we can do it in-house. I mean, you go to the conferences, you speak to municipalities. It doesn't take a genius or a legal expert to look at a handbook to make some changes there. So, I'm just trying to minimize, if we, if we can, the legal expenses.
And the goal with the personnel handbook is for Tim and I to sit down, look at what policies we need, what policies exist, which ones I am capable of drafting a new policy for, and which ones will require additional legal research. Making some of the changes to the purchasing policy, which is in the city code, requires writing an ordinance. I'll be honest, I haven't written an ordinance in four years. So, that does generally take legal expertise. Writing resolutions and requests for motions on personnel policies does not require writing an ordinance, and I am capable of doing that.
I think that Liquor Control Commission pecking order or bidding language is way more important than the rest of this stuff. Like, we need to be prepared so that we're not blindsided by that.
This was discussion item one.
I'm ready for the next one.
Okay.
Our favorite topic, budget.
I don't have any comments on the budget. We are in the process of preparing for the audit currently. But as the council asks for this to be a standing item, I ask if the council has any questions pertaining to the budget right now.
When is the audit?
Um, they, I believe they're coming later this month or early August. They usually deliver their report in October to the council.
So, question from my side. I know last, was it last year, we, the city received a correction, corrective action letter from the state of Michigan?
Yes.
September.
September of last year?
September 2016.
So, in this past year, I mean, we, we raised the millage rate tax increase. Some people did on council, and now it's, so that was fixed. So, if we are in the red next year, so what does that mean for us next year? If we, how's the state following up on this? I mean, you sent the response. I never seen the, the response to the corrective action letter.
The response just said that we were going to work going forward to do a balanced budget of revenues not being less than expenditures.
Have you had any follow-up from the state, or they just, they have to accept it?
No, the state has not followed up. They did not send any follow-up information, and I assumed, based on that, that they accepted our corrective action.
That would be good to know. I mean, at the very least, it sounds like they're at least monitoring us, and we're on their list if we did receive a letter.
I, I would actually say that it is, they go into a database and pull out everyone. They aren't looking at specific cities. They were looking at cities that had used portions of their fund balance for the last three years. They do that with the idea of keeping an eye out and looking to see if there are communities with a fund balance at the point where they are concerned about emergency manager status. That does not happen till the fund balance is below fifteen percent of your operating expenses. Ours currently is estimated to be between thirty-seven and forty percent.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the doomsday, sky is falling, you know, scenario. I'm worried about, you know, just the fact that we got a corrective action letter. And I guess my, my question is, for eighteen nineteen budget, do we have any idea? I know we have to get the audit from Plant Moran, but do we have any idea how much in the hole we are for eighteen nineteen?
Well, we aren't in the hole at all for eighteen nineteen because we haven't started the fiscal year.
Well, I know, technically. But when we, when we had our budget review, the number was something.
Yes, I don't have the budget in front of me to tell you what the projected shortfall or windfall would be.
Okay. 'Cause I think that's why, that's one of the benefits of this, having this on the, on the agenda, is if, okay, I think, I thought the number was one eighty, then I heard three hundred thousand, but then it varies if we take out the fire maintenance, mechanical maintenance or not, but which we need, by the way. So, I don't, I know it's anywhere, let's just call it two hundred thousand out, two hundred thousand dollars in the hole. So it'd be nice to have some sort of plan and say, okay, where are we at with the budget? But again, if we're waiting till Plant Moran, that's a discussion we can have later, but in the meantime, we need to keep it on the forefront. So.
I just, been on this budget for over a year. I just wanna bring to council's attention, because whenever I find these articles, I just wanna make sure that, that I'm bringing them to your attention, because it sort of validates the issues and problems we're having here in South Lyon. This article regarding the Charter Township of Plymouth, once again, this reporter did a good job. And this article came out June twenty-second, so just a couple of weeks ago. And it says, despite an increase in local property values, tax revenues are only increasing at the rate of inflation, which has remained flat. Spending grew at a faster pace, rising to three point five million from two point eight million for general government, so that'd be our general operating, and to five point four million for police and dispatch. Plant Moran said the township's pension costs are sixty-five percent funded, but Olin Jack said no money had been set aside in a trust fund for retiree healthcare, which has been paid year-to-year without establishing a special fund. Plant Moran also urged the township to plan ahead and try to develop a five-year projection for water, sewer system needs, and rates. So I think Plant Moran that went in and, for seventy thousand dollars, went in and had to straighten out a lot of things in Plymouth Township, I think is bringing out some very realistic things that we should be thinking about. Obviously, we haven't. And clearly, it, it's this pension fund issue, which, I don't know why council didn't deal with it. with it several years ago when you had the opportunity. But clearly, there's this opportunity for a five-year projection. So, Lynn, I don't know what your experience has been in the municipalities that you've worked with. I know in Kansas, I think, wasn't there a water plant there or?
We had wastewater, we were building a water plant, we had our own stormwater utility, we had several utilities.
How were you planning out for that? Were you doing two and three years, or were you just going kind of like?
We had a five-year capital improvement plan.
But we don't have that here?
No, we have a two to three year, depending upon the departments.
Okay. Maybe that's something we could consider.
It is.
Sort of rest on your expertise on that. This is from Cranes in Chicago, and this came out July 15th. To put out Chicago's great financial fire and create a legacy of lasting fiscability, stability, they are recommending that they make changes in the employees' pension to make sure that they receive 401K-style pensions, and to prohibit, which I found very interesting, to prohibit any enhancements to existing legacy pensions. So, anything that increases those pensions, I think we really have to take a serious look at.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the, I mean, without getting to the details, because I was kind of talked to earlier, that's one of the things we're going to be talking about today, which is a very serious concern that's in front of us.
These are.
Tonight, actually.
I mean, the red flags have been going up for years. And, and, you know, the economy is still not operating at a great GDP. You're still under 2%. It doesn't look like it's going to do much greater than that. There is now concern that we may not get through the, the big plans that were expected. So, we may be headed for another slowdown in the economy. And a slowdown in the economy in the next 12 to 18 months is going to be another slowdown in tax revenues for the city. So, I think we have to start really reading those tea leaves. And it, I don't know, but I'm going to stay on the budget.
And a 30-second comment. So, the reason why I want to know the, the dollar amount so bad is because, let's say, I'll just say it's 200,000, we're in, we're in the hole. Every time an expense comes before us, I want to be able to say, okay, I know there's different budgets you pull it out of, but at the end of the day, I want to be able to say, okay, can we save 2,000 here on this expense? And I want to challenge each purchase so we can try to whittle away at that lack of fund balance.
But I would argue that you're talking about expenditures in this fiscal year, which is a balanced budget, and would only be adding to the fund balance versus next year, which may or may not be a balanced budget.
Okay, let's put it this way, and I'm going to come back to this example. So, the fountain, okay? If, if, okay, it cost us, what, $9,900? So, and this is one I wanted to review with Bob. So, if he would, if we would have called other distributors, there may have been other distributors who were larger than the one that he got from Shelby Township, who he gave a PO to too soon because he did business with them 20 years ago. So, if he would have called other distributors, they may have been larger, and they may have had a larger buying power, and they could have given us a lower rate. So, I don't know, maybe we could have saved, I'm not saying we could have, but potentially, hypothetically, $2,000. Okay? So, how is that not a save for the city when we're at a budget shortfall?
We're not at a budget shortfall.
Well, not this year, because we had to raise taxes. I get it. But going forward, looking at where we're spending, we can save money, that can only help us, and that'll mitigate some of the, the potential tax increases that we have coming forward.
But that doesn't change whether there is a shortfall or excess in next budget year. It only adds to the fund balance.
It's still good practice, though.
It's going to roll over.
I agree, it's good practice, but.
It's going to roll over. I don't think I, you know, I can make an argument that challenging and saving money is going to hurt the budget.
I'm not saying it would hurt the budget. I'm saying they're two different issues. Saving money in this year and balancing the budget next year are completely separate issues.
I'm not here to argue. If you could, just as soon as we can get the number of how much we're in the hole for 1819, and I want to start working towards that number, that would be great.
In the meantime, Mr. Eseltine is sitting there charging us for sitting in the audience while we could be talking about the Ask Me Contract.
Bob Downtown, need to put you in the front.
I'll take it, though. Well, I distributed some items tonight before the meeting. I was on vacation until today, but I was able to catch up on a lot of things today, which appear in this report. A couple of items, I know there's been, I've wondered why DTE didn't pick up their poll and establish the fact it is their poll. They agreed it's their poll by norms. Why are they letting it sit there? So, I just couldn't take it anymore. So, I called them and said, get your poll. Well, I found out that the person that came out and shut off the power filed a, a work order, and there's a confirmation number I noted. Actually, on the 4th of July, they were working overtime, and they saw the poll was still there. So, as of July 4th, or, yeah, July 4th, I was told today that within six to 10 working days, it would be removed. So, we've got a few days left. Hopefully, they'll do it. It just fries me. Chief Collins and I received two emails over the last week and a half or so, giving a timetable. They did confirm basically, though, that the cost to the city would be $6,000. Unfortunately, it wasn't the lower ball figure that we were kind of led to believe at the meeting face-to-face. But $6,000 is the figure that they have presented. So, I asked Lynn today for the next council meeting to put on the agenda, not only that we would have to make the formal request, although all the studies have been done, and we've had all the meetings with staff. The formal request, if that could be on the next city council agenda, as well as the approval of the $6,000.
Can I ask a question related to that? Assuming that everything goes away in favor of this next time, next go-around, how long is it going to take them to get to getting this done?
Two to three months.
Just for the.
The timetable, Lloyd will tell you.
I mean, they were sending emails out to the wrong people and everything. I mean, come on.
Two to three months. That was TIA's fault.
I know, but they're still, you know.
It is nerve-wracking. So, Road Commissioner of Oakland County, I put it in quotes on here, two to three-month timeframe to get all of this accomplished.
If they could get their signs up fast enough, they'd have two sides on it really quick and just.
It's all right. I mean, can we call our county commissioner?
I think it's a great, yeah.
Spend it in the backyard.
I think it's because we do know for fact, TIA told us that the county has either covered all of the cost or part of the cost in other communities in the past.
I think you should show up at Phil's office and say, can you help us?
I will.
I've been saying this for a year now.
Talk to Phil ASAP.
And estimates on those arms?
Yes, I think Lloyd, you know, Lloyd remarked in the information I presented you, Lloyd noted that he preferred the arms, which would be more state-of-the-art to have an arm off of each of the major poles at the intersection. Those are two poles, there'd be two different arms. And that would be a lot more aesthetic and be more in line with how those traffic signals are presented.
Probably be four arms.
And so, we don't have a cost for the arms, but I will get the cost for the arms before the next.
Four arms, one for each lane, right? Two on each pole, 90 degrees from each other.
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. In addition to that, the only other item I wanted to note is that I was asked to the, I think each of the last two council meetings about, is there any kind of list for historic buildings? And I prepared a list of, a very preliminary list, but I think it's about 99% accurate. A list of historic buildings within the DDA, of course, including the core downtown. And then page two is a preliminary list that I'll be working with Eastern Michigan University this winter on, for a proctored number of buildings throughout the entire city of South Lyon that may be eligible for the national district. Any other questions?
Hotel's looking great.
Windows are in.
Fence came down.
Fence came down today?
The concrete work was supposed to possibly come in this week, but the rain delayed.
Are they still saying end of August? John, you probably got a pulse on it as well.
He's kind of said mid-August, so hoping. A lot of finger crossing.
Right now, the wiring and plumbing, before they, they have to get the inspections before they enclose the walls. There's a lot of work in there today.
And the Mediterranean restaurant is open.
Received their certificate of occupancy last Thursday.
Yeah, they opened today.
He's ready.
You got a lot of traffic today.
I did update today the occupancy or the vacancy list, and there are some, there are two leases, I don't know who they are, but there are two less spaces available in the Bushes Plaza. All of the tropical smoothie place, doesn't seem to be much activity, but there are no vacancies in that plaza, and there are still five vacancies in.
Maybe I'm slow to the party here, but what's going on with flooring your way?
The flooring, former flooring store is, is the paddywhack is going in there.
Oh, paddywhack's moving.
Right, I noted that a couple.
I'm sorry, I'm, it's late. And what's going in the paddywhack again?
Ah, that is about 200 square feet, and that for rent sign is.
Somebody's house, someone's going to move in. Hey, you know, I like that store. I actually saw something today where people said, they thought it was a little knickknack, paddywhack, of course, no pun intended, until they saw their kids started to get involved in games, and they, you know, people love that stuff.
They have cool things for a variety of age groups. I just hope, and already, we have to send our enforcement official over.
They're well-renowned for that. I mean.
I think, I need to talk to them, because they don't have an understanding of how to present their store window. Our ordinance officer's going to talk to them, and I'm going to talk to them.
Okay. Well, they're obviously doing well if they can move down and pay that price.
Yeah, we wish them well, and I'll work with them and try to make them a quality asset.
Good.
Thank you.
Let me scroll up. All right. This Friday, our Concerts in the Park series is Pete Big Dog Fetters, who is one of our repeat bands and very popular with the residents. And on Friday, Saturday, the 15th, we have our first movie in the park. It's, I'm going to butcher this, Moana. It's a Disney movie, so definitely family-friendly, and so come out and enjoy that in McCatty Park. The council members should have all received in their packets a letter from the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey. That's the NHANES survey. It is conducted annually by the CDC. It is a comprehensive and confidential survey conducted to identify health changes within the country. The survey is conducted in different counties across the country, and Oakland County has been selected for 2017. We've all been invited to the Open House and Media Day, which is Tuesday, the 18th, at the Embassy Suites in Troy. I would like to stress to the residents that if the NHANES study does contact you and ask you to come in for a examination, that you make your best effort to do so. This is how the CDC makes their determinations on different illness patterns in the U.S., as well as making decisions and research related to things such as obesity, health, healthy hearts, cholesterol, different things like that. They do a full physical that most people don't have, and it is absolutely zero cost to the individuals involved, and they generally will provide transportation to and from the site for residents. So, if you can possibly be involved, if you're invited, do so. Our farmer's market continues to be very busy on the Saturdays with a great mix of plants and flowers, vegetables, and other edible food and crafts. Please make sure you take time to go out to the farmer's market and see our local vendors. They do a great job out there on Saturday. The city bookkeeper, Lori Mosher, and I met recently with a representative from MERS regarding options related to our employee retirement system. MERS is making changes, as well as recommending different options for communities in relation to their retirement program from what they had provided to the city several years ago. I am working with the representative to commission a report on the city's options to bring before the council.
Good. When do you think you'll have that?
Very good, Lynn. Right now, Sue has sent me information on surplus divisions, which would allow us to create a separate vision, division in the retirement program to begin paying down the unfunded liability. We're also setting up employee education. But once we commission the report, she has not given me a timeframe for how long it takes to actually put the report together and prepare for the presentation. But I'd like to see it, if possible, done before the end of September. Met with members of the Parks and Rec Commission at the end of June regarding fundraising for Volunteer Park. We discussed breaking down the Phase One cost estimate further so that we can create manageable goals for the groups to begin fundraising, as there are several local groups like the American Legion, the Panthers, the lacrosse group, the South Lyon soccer group that have all mentioned that they want to do fundraising. By breaking it down even further, it'll give the individual groups a target goal for specific parts of the park that they can do, rather than the big multimillion-dollar Phase One. Beyond that, we've got the car show coming up, July 26th. Make sure that everybody goes to that, because as Josie mentioned earlier, we've got the Arts in Cars. I think it'll be a great opportunity for the community, and that's all I have this evening.
What's the status on the Blight on the corner of Nine Mile and Pontiac Trail?
Both Don Gotham, our code enforcement officer, and I have had conversations with representatives from CVS. They are working to fix it, and I am continuing my contact with CVS's representative to make sure that if it is not taken care of in a reasonable time, that we contact their district manager and have it taken care of.
Okay, excellent follow-up on that. I did receive more complaints this weekend. I think people watched the tape and said, you go Maggie. We have, we have gone in there themselves, patrons have, and tried to address it personally and have not received any response. So, I heard a lot about this this weekend, so I wanted to make sure I did a follow-up.
I drive down the Rite Aid, that's still in the city, and, to the other end, 11 Mile?
Yeah.
It's an option.
Yeah, yeah. Because Rite Aid looks pretty nice down there, and so does Walgreens across the street. I mean, I admit they got a couple weeds there in their mulch, and, and I may be a little bit finicky about landscaping, but this is a mess. It is a mess. And it's still a mess. And the flags are flapping. Are they allowed to flap those flags? It looks like a three-ring circus down there. Those flags that are 20 feet tall.
I would have to look again at which flags you're talking about.
They're flapping little flags. They're, they're, they're in the wind, and they flap. They must have three of them.
Well, when you talk flags, are they decorative flags? Are they U.S. flags and Michigan flags?
No, they're, they're marketing flanks for CVS.
Generally, those are only allowed as temporary signs for 30 days at a period and not more than 180 days in any calendar year. So, we will talk to them about that.
I have a question. Lynn, the current union contracts, are those available to the public if they wanted to see those?
Yes.
Okay, so, I want to be very delicate, because we're going to be going to a closed session to discuss this, but just ask some general questions. For the DPW and wastewater, are they, do we currently pay for their healthcare after they retire?
Yes.
So.
We pay a portion of employee, and we pay a portion of retiree healthcare for all employee groups within the city.
Okay, so how much do we pay each month?
It varies from union to union and individual to individual. The city pays, I believe it's either 700 and seven, or 750 to police unions. Right now, administrative personnel and non-union employees, I believe it is at 500, although the council has made exceptions for administrative and non-union. the council has made exceptions for administrative and non-union employees.